All right. Welcome to Nottingham to Monday, May 6th, Board of Select meeting. We will start this meeting off tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, for being here on this nice, beautiful, summer-like evening.
I come in out of playing baseball.
Oh, too old for that, I guess. We're going to change our order around a little tonight, and starting off the meetings, we're going to have our first appointment, our first meeting is with Steve Rowlands, our Highway Department, due to for time and stuff, so. And then we'll continue on to like normal, back to the original order of the agenda with the manifest and payroll and minutes and stuff like that, and it'll go down the items like normal. Hello, Steve?
Hello?
That was everything? You want to start off?
Sure. Obviously, Steve is here tonight to talk about the status of the roads, and obviously, we're reviewing the first quarter of the operating budget, so just the impact of where we're at presently, based on the road maintenance that's been completed. We're obviously already over budget on two line items, so just discussing where we're at with road maintenance in general, and then just moving forward. I know you had some questions about budget items, so here we are. So, Steve, can you give us an update on where we're at with road maintenance so far?
So, where we're at with the road maintenance, we started with ditching and some grading. Oh, I just, no, wait, let me rewind. We started with tree removal from the last snowstorm. Then we moved on to, or moved back on to ditching and grading. So that's kind of where we're at now, is we're ditching and grading. Some of the roads have already been graded twice because we got a snowstorm in between the grading, and that's where we're at with that right now.
Which roads are completed for grading right now?
Uh, we've done, uh, Ledge Farm, we've done Berry, Guile, Stevens Hill. The bottom of Stevens Hill has been done twice. Priest.
Some of the camp roads, didn't you do?
Camp roads, we've done ditching and touched up with the skid steer while we were there, got rid of some potholes, but we haven't actually been there with the grader yet. Tomorrow's, yeah. Tomorrow's plan is to head over to North River Camp Roads and get those ditched so we can get those graded, get the leaves and sticks out of them first. I had the guys over there today getting the brush off those so that we could do that tomorrow. Wanted to do that today, but because of the rain, we gotta give it a day to dry out before I can do ditches. But tomorrow looks like it's gonna be a really good day to get over there and get that done. As far as the camp roads over there, or whatever you want to call them, have done one over there, I can't think of the name of it right now, the second one on the right, off of Cooper Hill.
Haynes?
No, right after Haynes, the next one after Haynes. I can't, for some reason, it's just the cookie lady. But that one, I have gone out and fixed the potholes on that one with the skid steer maybe three, four, three, four weeks ago. And...
How about Mitchell?
Mitchell's been done.
Mitchell's?
Mitchell's actually maybe done twice. I know, I know it was half di, it was ditched basically twice because we had a lot of tree problems and everything after that, that storm that we didn't need.
And what's, I guess, what's the progress with a lot of the debris removal, the branches and stuff?
I mean, as far, it's out of, obviously, out of the path of travel. We had, I want to say, three to four days of chipping, I guess, we'll call it four, because it was, that we went around and chipped. We still got more to do. Today, like I said, they hauled it back to the burn pit at the pit, just in full brush size.
Okay.
So, that's where we're at.
When you do the ditching, are you fixing old, obviously, again, this is not an inquiry like to, to base you, right? Don't think of them, they're just general questions from people that have brought up. You know, the, some ditches are already there, they're already there, which just needs to be cleaned out to let the water flow off, but, you know, some of these older roads are very narrow.
Yep.
And people with their property, you know, cutting ditches into them.
Well, okay, so...
And again, you know what I'm bringing up, so just speak to it, so we...
But basically, the ditches were there, but over time, years and years of grading and not cleaning them out, well, we're primarily talking about the camp roads here.
Yep.
There are now almost two-foot windrows of road material and leaves and sticks. Well, if the water's trapped in the road and it can't get off like it's supposed to do, well, there's where your potholes come from, you know? So what we're trying to do is get rid of those windrows and let the water go where it naturally wants to go. The spots that, over the years, that the grader has made, little pull-offs going down into the woods, they're actually so full now, they're dammed up. I mean, there's just, you can't fit no more, no more ditch material in them, so we've been cleaning out some of that as well, just trying to neaten up.
Due, due to the fact that the budget constraints this year and what we're dealing with for maintenance-wise, and having our own grader in town, and using the town-owned equipment, you know, since we own it and since it's ours, would there be like a grading schedule that you're gonna be able to implement, or is it kind of just at, at the will of which road you feel is needed?
It's the roads that need it. I mean, obviously, if they don't need it, there's no sense in going out there and wasting fuel and cutting edges and time, but, yeah, as they're...
Some people think one pothole requires grading of a whole road.
No, it doesn't. No, it doesn't. You know, if it's just one or two little potholes and we can go out there and maybe even throw a little dirt in it, I mean...
Probably around New York, right, and clean it up.
Yeah, actually, I'm surprised how hard they are.
Really?
It, yeah, I mean, we, we put a new cutting edge on five roads ago. It's already got an inch and a half of wear out of the center.
Wow.
Yeah, so I ordered another set of cutting edges, I ordered carbides. Those were not carbides, they were on the shelf over there. I never would have ordered cutting edges without carbides, so I ordered a set with carbides. They'll last a lot longer. And they're not that much more money. We also ordered a set of teeth for the ripper so that we can, you know, loosen up the material and not use them a wood, you know, because the ripper's got little teeth and you just put it down and, and it kind of loosens up the road for grading, to cut the potholes out. So I ordered a set of those carbides as well.
They worn out now.
They were, nothing left of them. They were just nubs. And those were non-carbide as well. As far as the budget goes, and what the budget is gonna do to our work for the summer, I've got, the paper is coming back out to work some numbers with me and try to find a better way to get more bang for our buck, but I don't believe I'm gonna even be able to finish Deerfield Road all the way to Flutter Street with the money that I have.
You mean from like 156 to the bottom, or where they ended last?
Where we left off last year, coming down from the Deerfield line, from there, I don't believe I'm gonna be able to make it all the way to Flutter Street. But if I can get down closer to Stevens Hill, I could be happy with that, and then we could maybe throw a little coal patch in some of the, but it's just delamming so bad that...
Were we gonna pay, or just...
We were gonna pay, well, I won't, my plan was to mill the top coat off that, because it obviously didn't get tack.
Right.
So it's just delamming, and if we don't take it off and we put another layer over it, then we're gonna lose two layers.
Just a Band-Aid, right.
And we're just throwing good money against bad.
Yeah.
It, it needs to be something that's gonna last, so the only way to do that is to mill it off and then tack it and put on a top coat.
Yep.
It's not typically done on town roads, do milling, but we got a good base, there's, I've maybe got one or two spots that I may have to fix under it, but the base is still good, and I don't see any sense in grinding up the whole road and starting over, you know, I mean, the base is fine. If we just take off that wear coat, the top, and...
Is that wear coat resulting on the company that we had before that put it down?
I, I don't, I don't know if they, I can't say, I wasn't, I wasn't here.
It's been a long time, so I think it's just a matter of, okay, I'm just way behind on...
I believe that road and...
I just drove it.
Lucas Pond Road were done at the same time by the same person, and I don't believe they tacked it, I don't know if they were asked to. You know, tack's a relatively new thing to town roads, by relatively, I mean, in the last, I don't know, 15 or so years, 20 maybe? So I don't know if that was even, I don't know, I gotta say, I wasn't here.
So if we're not gonna have enough money to do the whole thing...
Then we'll do the worst part, which would be the Deerfield end of where we left off, and come down, if we can get down to, from Stevens Hill down, there's only a few places that have delamed. We'll just...
All right, so the Deerfield side's wor, the side closer to Deerfield's worse.
Oh, yeah, oh, yes, yeah. Yeah, last fall, I could drive over here and miss all the pieces that had come apart and fit my truck through it every morning. Yeah, I can't do that and not in stay in my lane, and I can barely do it and stay in the road. You know, there's a few spots that, you know, it's, it's come off pretty good, but that's just from the flowers, you know, and the winter we had, we didn't get a good frost, nothing froze, everything heaved and settled, and then froze again and settled, and it just...
It makes it worse.
Yeah, and then it was watering in, it freeze and break off another piece, and, yeah, it's just the bad winter and, and no, no tack, so. So, yeah, so back to the budget thing, I just don't know if I'm gonna get all the way down to Flutter Street. And maybe we can get, you know, get around, Jeff's supposed to be out tomorrow and work some numbers with me and see what we can do to see how far we can get with what we have.
Well, that's all we can do. Still got a fair amount of salt left.
Yeah.
Oh, that last storm must have...
It ate a little bit of it, but, I mean, we only did...
We probably didn't salt much on that storm.
No, we didn't. It was, the road was warm enough, I don't think, I don't think anybody actually put out a whole load.
Good.
So, yeah, I mean, we loaded all the trucks for Ballis, they treated the first go-around, and nobody touched up, I mean, maybe a couple spots. Yeah, maybe a couple spots got touched up afterwards, but it, it broke up pretty good. It was warm enough, the ground was warm enough.
Like I say, we didn't need that.
Nope, no, we definitely did not need that.
Do you have any problem getting rid of the brush and stuff like that?
Did I have a problem getting rid of it?
No, last meeting we, when we had, we were mentioning to people that if they wanted the bark mulch from Bark Mulch.
Oh, the chips, yeah, the wood chips. We had a few people that wanted it, and we delivered a few loads. Yeah, we actually probably had more people that wanted it than got it, because we were able to, you know, lose a lot of it in the woods. But obviously, if you're going by somebody's house, then we don't want to blow it on their lawn.
Sure. That's respectable.
Right, right.
Well, we got a lot of it done. A lot of the brush cleaned up.
We, a lot of it's cleaned up, I mean, there's still more, there's still a lot of dead trees to take care of, there's still, you know...
Hopefully, utility companies will help us out a little bit.
That's what we hope for.
That's right.
My concern is that we're so far with the budget year-to-date right now, is if we get storms in November, December of next year, I don't know, are you thinking of this summer and spring and summer of items that you need to basically kind of cut back on in the budget, like?
Yeah. Yeah, trying to figure a way to, to do that.
One other thing here, the 2014 Max six-wheeler supposedly requires 7,500 repairs for valve seal, valve seals blown out of the head.
Yep.
So, what do we got there? Just needs to be...
Yeah, so the, well, the older Max had a breather tube that didn't have a filter on them, and they just would breathe, crankcase breather. The newer Max have a filter on them, it's required that they're changed every 50,000 miles, or X number of hours. I don't believe it's ever been changed in that truck. It was plugged right up solid, and that's what blew the valve seals. So it's getting valve seals and a breather filter.
Okay, the rest of the truck's good, though?
Oh, yeah. Yep, it's got one air leak, but that's, that's a minor fix, but, yeah, the truck's, truck's decent.
All right, do we have anything else we gotta go chase down on other trucks that might have missed?
We just, we just did some fuel tank straps on the oldest Mac, which is the 10-wheeler, I think that, I forget which number it is, but anyway, we just did the fuel straps on that and exhaust bracket or bushing on the cab. I think that's about all we've done on that truck. It's doing okay.
Do you see anything coming up that we should be aware of that might, that might affect your budget? I'm asking this because I don't, I don't see you that as...
Yeah, no.
I passed on cross, so...
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I mean, other than...
Unfortunate things that happen.
Unfortunate weather.
Yeah, I can't, I have... But there's nothing, there's nothing of major road concern out there that we haven't already addressed that you...
No, the grader seems to be, we just put some money into the grader, fixed the grader up, we did all the duck work, so the defrosters work, and got rid of all the, the mice problems in there, because they had eaten every bit of duck work in that thing. So we just fixed all that, the grader's doing pretty good, we get, you know, we will be needing another cutting edge shortly, but, yeah, that seems to be doing pretty good. Obviously, the loader and, and the excavator are fairly new. The loader does have an appointment on Thursday for, I don't know, something they were supposed to fix when they were here for the last oil change, and they didn't have the parts or whatever, so they're coming Thursday to finish that up. I think it was something to do with the DEF fluid or maybe, or something, I don't...
They come here to fix it, though, we're not transporting.
Right, right, they come out here. Yeah, we pressure wash it off and get it in the garage on Wednesday, and then on Thursday they...
Who does the maintenance on it?
That's Cat.
Cat.
We do, we do the maintenance as far as, you know, greasing and, and, you know, the everyday maintenance.
Right, the daily maintenance.
But they, they do the oil changes and...
The monthly routine, or bi-monthly.
Yeah, maybe like twice a year type of stuff, maybe.
Utilizing the tobacco at the recycling center at all?
We've, we've used it a couple times, but, yeah, not much, a little bit.
Can you find a good use for it?
I mean, we, like I said, we have used it, I mean, a few times, when it's, when it's handy, sometimes it, it makes more sense to just run tobacco down the road and load up the excavator and haul it somewhere. So, I mean, there has been times we have used it, and there will be more times we will use it. We try to work around their schedule, obviously, so it's there when they need it as well.
Of course.
Well, we did, did put some mirrors on it also.
What, tobacco?
Yeah.
Didn't have mirrors on?
No, I don't know why, I don't know why it didn't have any mirrors.
Okay, interesting.
Yeah, and they were relatively inexpensive from Cat. I was surprised, was really surprised.
From what it looks like, you have 43% of your budget expenditures, so...
That's remaining.
That's just left.
That's, sorry, sorry, by the way.
That's what I was saying, like, there's not a whole lot, there's no wiggle room.
Why am I reading that? Oh, left, sorry.
Left, yeah. We just started manning.
Right.
Probably meet with you again by the end of the summer, at the latest.
Probably before that.
Yeah, probably July.
Okay.
Right, into the quarter.
If you want to do it that way, sure. I just wondered, I mean, depending where we go for expenditures.
Right.
That'll be everything.
Yeah, I thought we were doing quarterly.
If that's what you want, if that's...
That's fine with me, I mean...
We got new policies all over the place, so, okay, I'm good to answer all the questions I wanted, so. I'm good.
Yep.
Thanks, Steve.
Text me if you've got anything in between.
Yep, be glad to. Thanks, Steve.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, we ready to move on?
Oh, yeah, sorry, I'm just...
Oh, yeah.
I'm just doing...
I didn't want to rush you, well, I do want to rush you, but...
Copious notes.
I'm just calculating things for my thought process for later. All right, we're gonna go back to the normal schedule of the meeting, we're gonna go to approve our manifest and approval of minutes, that everybody gets to take a look at that. Is there any questions anybody has on it?
Do we have a manifest to approve?
That was sent to us, email thing, last Friday.
It was part of that package?
No, Betsy sends it out.
Oh, okay, that's the Betsy thing, sorry, okay. Yeah, that was like...
The week before.
Two Fridays ago.
Right.
Sorry, that's why, I was like, okay, yeah, no, that's fine.
Yeah, because it's...
That's why I was confused.
Four thirty.
Because I was like thinking something...
No.
Okay.
It's those wonderful months that have five weeks in it.
Yeah.
Or five Mondays in it, I should say.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the accounts payable, manifest and payroll for April 29th, 2024, and April 30th, 2024.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, roll call.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Decker.
Aye, John Moore.
Aye, Tim DaBrio.
Aye, Matt Schrelin.
Anybody have a question on the minutes? Or any changes that you want to make towards the minutes?
No, thank you for fixing the ones from the 15th.
Yep.
From the 15th or the first?
The first, the first.
First, yes, the first.
Are we okay with the amendments that I suggested?
Mm-hmm. They seem fine to me.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for April 1st, 2024, public minutes for April 1st, 2024, public minutes for April 15th, 2024, and non-public for April 15th, 2024.
I wonder if we just do four one to begin with?
Okay.
Because we're here for 15.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the minutes for April 1st, 2024.
As amended.
As amended.
All right, I'll, all right, go ahead. I'll second.
There you go, John's second.
I'll second, sure, whatever.
Thank you.
I didn't want to fight you for it.
Oh, there's no fighting, not allowed.
Any changes? Everybody's good.
Everybody's good. Want to vote?
Vote, ready to vote?
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Decker.
I'll abstain. Aye, Tim DaBrio.
Aye, Matt Schrelin.
You abstaining this time? You gotta be consistent. Make a motion to approve the public minutes and non-public minutes for April 15th, 2024.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, roll call.
Steve Welch abstain.
Aye, John Decker.
Aye, John Moore.
Aye, Tim DaBrio.
Aye, Matt Schrelin.
Before we go, I did see a correction on it, sorry. Line 313 and line 321 had me listed as voting in the affirmative, and I was not yet. So, who we gotta recall? Sorry about that. 313 and what? 313 and 321.
Well, should be Moore.
This should be Moore's.
It's copy and paste.
All right, how do we recall that? Now do, approve the minutes as amended?
I make a motion to approve the minutes for April 15th, 2024, as amended, the public minutes, and the non-public minutes for April 15th, 2024.
All right, I'll second.
Again, one more time. Steve Welch abstain.
Aye, John Decker.
Aye, John Moore.
Aye, Tim DaBrio.
Aye, Matt Schrelin.
Moving on to the boards and committees, I'll start with my planning board. We didn't have a meeting last weekend, it was the weekend before, so it was nice to have a whole week off, all board meetings. It was a workshop that we had, where we'll be continuing that workshop. It was nice to get a lot of insight from a lot of the new members that we have. There was nothing talked about plans or anything like that or anything, because again, it was a workshop. It was more for just questions answering, you know, procedures, how we're gonna deal with money issues for the board, just general housekeeping is what we did. If you see the minutes for this upcoming Wednesday, we'll be meeting to have a, for Fouse owner's properties, which is gonna be located off 156 across from Nottingham Sand and Gravel, there's a 16-lot subdivision going there, he has some revised plans, but then after that, you'll see the next agenda item as you go down. We'll be us referring to fees and updating our fees that we have for people, for developments, and how much we charge, or whether we're gonna put an escrow on their account, you know, so that we have money, so if they go over for mailing, the town isn't gonna be covered for that expense, they're gonna have the money set aside so that we can just take it from them, you know, for what, so there's money in the, in their account for overshores or expenditures, because some of these, planning board, some of these sites, you know, when you're doing a 16-lot subdivisions, the paperwork can be astronomical, I mean, big, and changes that can be made, so we just want to make sure the town's not getting burdened, but then it goes to fees, as we're looking at a couple towns to, oh, it breaks down to, you know, how many fees we charge for which house lots, how you doing, road coverage, we want to make sure that we're in line with other towns, and I obviously mentioned that, you know, we don't have to be the cheapest in the, the seacoast area for, by any means, but, you know, we shouldn't be the least expensive in any, any situation, as we keep our tax rate low, and we try to keep a fiscal budget, you know, which is going to keep our tax rate low, that is very inviting to builders, to build bigger and more expensive houses because... Uh, to build bigger and more expensive houses, because lower tax rate means lower overall bill. Make more money. So, something we're gonna be looking at, and that'll be also on the agenda for, uh, our meeting on Wednesday.
You got a full board now?
We do, we have, uh, got all the volunteers, everything, we have a full board.
Perfect.
Um, which is nice. And, uh, so, you know, it's gonna take some time for everybody to get allocated with everything that goes on. Uh, but as more people attend and as they say, we sit more meetings, it's like a learning curve, you'll just absorb and.
Yep.
You know, get on.
Osmosis.
Yeah, one of the things we, you know, we really stressed at the last meeting was for the new, um, personnel on the board to speak up with their questions. You know, for the fact that, don't be hesitant just because you don't know. I mean, that is a time to ask the questions, especially with some of the, uh, the develops that are coming in front of us and the land use people that are coming in front of us. They have a wealth of knowledge, so it's good for our board members to maybe feed off some of their information, you know, even if it's off the topic a little. But just to get them a better understanding of what's going on, so. Uh, should be interesting. And. It's pretty much all for planning board right now. And anybody else want to go?
Well, you went to the budget committee meeting, two weeks, three weeks ago.
Alright, wait.
Yep.
And we have a meeting after that, though?
No.
No.
We had the fifteenth and then.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Eighteenth was the budget meeting.
Too much time off, guys. Uh, yeah, so with the budget meetings, I sat in for Tim.
Thank you.
Um, which we actually had to place a new member on the board for the resignation of Mr. Decker. Who's now a pleasure sitting with us here, uh, to fill his position. Uh, we narrowed it down to two great candidates. And it came down to an exact deadlock on the board. Uh, because there was only ten members voting and it came to a five-five vote, which was something there. Uh, so. I'm the one, and it's again, right there on TV, you'll see it if you want to see it, I switched my vote, uh, in order to break the tie. Uh, cause after consensus of everybody on the board, no one else was gonna switch. So. That's how we ended up, uh, with our, our, our new member. Uh, then we went on.
We have the name of the name is?
I, I, I don't have the name off the top of my head.
Karen Quinn.
Karen, right?
Karen Quinn.
Karen Quinn, there you go.
Sorry.
It's okay.
I was like.
I put you on the spot there.
I was like, I think it's Karen.
Yeah, I think, well, you know, don't want to just quote anybody's name, so I didn't say it, um. Yes, that was fun. And then we're, we have next, uh, we're gonna have an earlier meeting this year, uh, to go over some other things, and I believe you're gonna be taking care of that.
Yep.
So, if you want to add anything to the budget committee, cause I was just there for that.
Yep.
Particular reason?
No, I know, we had talked about last year, Ellen, us putting together some sort of presentation for the budget committee. I know, I know they had a workshop that they could have attended, but I think that was like two weeks ago. Or, or is that, no, theirs is in the fall.
Theirs is in the fall, yeah, the annual, the annual, um, budget workshop is in September, I think it's just, it's a kickoff to the budget season, so. I've reached out to New Hampshire Municipal to come out and, um, do a specialized training just with our group, um, obviously it would be good for the budget committee as well as the select board. I figured at that point, we could have them really focus on the things that are, um, relative to Nottingham, you know, the tax cap. Default budget, just really kind of get a good overview of, um, processes and what the budget committee, the official budget committee's responsibilities are. Um, so I've put that out to the committee and I, I don't have specific dates yet, but I think, um, in talking with Owen Friend Gray, I think they were looking for a Thursday in August. So I'll be requesting whatever date works for the municipal association, and it's their, um, legal advisory team that hosts that meeting, so. It'll be a good time to ask some really, um, pointed questions about Nottingham rather than just the general. It's either gonna be Steve Buckley or Jonathan Cowell.
Okay.
So that's what we're working toward.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Want me to go into rec?
Please do.
Get out your ro, your rods, the fishing derby's on Saturday morning, John, I'm sure you'll be there, seven AM start. It's actually eight AM start, but be there at seven AM to register, but they're still taking registrations and it goes until eleven fifteen. Um, they do, um, I spoke with the rec and they are putting together, they've got a group of volunteers, I think five volunteers. Right now that are trying to put together a disc golf course over at Marston. So they are looking for sponsors for that, but they're gaining some traction, they've got three sponsors so far, so. They're hoping to put eight holes in and then she can apply for a grant to get the other, not holes. Goals, uh, and then they're applying for a grant for the other eight, so.
Don't you need?
Nine, nine and nine.
Nine, you need nine.
Yep. Um, so, I mean, they could potentially get that done later this year.
Will that be going into the woods and everything?
Yeah, it would be mostly, I think, in the woods, from what you were saying, maybe along the edge of the field, but. You have played, John?
Uh, I, no, but I've seen it, so.
Um, they are looking for a lifeguard for the summer for the rec camp, um, the, all the details are on the website right now, they do not have any lifeguards right now for the camp, so. And they take that lifeguard with them, so if they go to Durham or something like that, that lifeguard goes with the camp to help watch the kids. Um, and then I think, um. Courtney met with, um, Chief Woodman on Friday and they decided that they cannot do, uh, national night out in August, they did it last year. The first Tuesday in August has been set, um, as national night out and based upon the budget, um, and payroll staffing, they just can't, they can't make it work. So, unfortunately, they have made the decision to cancel it for this year, and hopefully next year we can work it into the budget somehow.
Um, on that, do we know how much cost, like what the cost was?
I think it's hard because for the, she had two or three part-timers working that night. Uh, Fawn had, was paying her, so it's not, it's payroll, but then it's o, other costs too.
Right. So. Just wasn't sure what the cost was, I've heard somebody mention like the celebrate Nottingham committee, if that's considered. It's, it was a huge, well-attended event. Last year, and I think other things that we've either spent the money on were good, but maybe not as well-attended as that one, that was probably one of the biggest town events that has been held in a while, so. I've read several people would like to see, I don't know if there's something we're able to do or not, but.
I mean, it's an expenditure from the, like, we, they can't spend the payroll.
Right.
Like, we can't just take that revenue from that fund to.
That's what I was curious about, so if it's payroll, then that's.
We can accept donations to cover the, the payroll costs.
But then like maybe the other portions for like trucks or whatever could maybe, I don't know, but that would be maybe something we might monitor. Look at, just it seems to be a very big community outreach, lots of attendance.
Well, I think we need to find out what it's gonna cost.
Correct.
I mean.
And where, and exactly what it is, cause like, I don't, the money can't pay budgets or salaries per se, but it could maybe cover other stuff for it, and then we can. See if we can get either donations or volunteers or.
Payroll's probably the biggest expense.
Payroll's the biggest, is the biggest issue for them, because it's not just that night, it's the planning going into it and the rec department handled most of it. Um, and Courtney's just tapped out, you know, as far as what they can do with what they've got, that's what she felt when she met with chief, and she felt the same way.
Okay.
But.
Anything on Marston?
We held our first, uh, softball, played a few games there last year, we actually held our first baseball game there last week, so.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yep, yep.
Well-attended, well-attended.
Yes, very well-attended.
It was so great to see the field, the fields were great.
Yep, from ten until five-thirty or six o'clock at night, the fields were just full rotating with baseball and softball games, so. Um, it was great, it's great to see the, the, the teams playing at the same time, softball and baseball, cause you never, you haven't seen that, you don't, you don't play on the same field, so it's kinda cool. I was actually asked to umpire a softball game and I had to politely decline, cause I'd never done that before, but. Um, you do not want me doing that.
The dugout's so great.
They're getting there, we, uh, the weather. The weather has not cooperated with the painting, we've got to finish the two baseball dugouts and start the two softball dugout, so. It's just every weekend, like this past Sunday was, we were planning to do it and it's, we started raining at one o'clock in the afternoon, two o'clock in the afternoon, so unfortunately it was not cooperating, but. They're usable, we've got the benches in them, so, uh, and people were really excited to be there. So even the people from other towns were really impressed with how everything, how quickly it all came together, so. And then we had, NYA had a hundred seventy baseball and softball players here on Saturday for opening day, so, I know Steve came by, I fed him a raw burger, and, uh.
Still feel a little ill.
Yeah, sorry about that. Um, but we, it was a very busy day here on Saturday too, so it was really cool to see, so.
It was a great turnout.
Yes.
Was that the last game down to Marston, it was a great game.
Yep.
So it was mostly Nottingham teams against Nottingham teams or other?
No, it's against other towns.
Perfect.
Yep. So it was packed, so I think one of the things we're gonna have to work on is figuring out parking, um, into the grass field potentially or something, because that parking lot is not.
Here or there?
There, well, here is always an issue, but there, definitely for games, and we offset the games to make sure, we're trying not to have two games at the same time, but it's sometimes kind of a challenge, and then lacrosse practice is there too, so. We're just working with the, the rec to kind of bounce everything around, so. But, great to see.
Yeah. Well, then we will come, perfect, alright, um, anything else, or we want to move on to the town administration's report?
Um, obviously we met with, we just met with Steve, so it's not. And CIP, just waiting for people and I'll schedule something out at some point. I know that, um.
You're drinking, are you for CIP until, like, October or?
No, we want to do it much sooner.
Yeah, we want to do it sooner.
Good.
We, we didn't meet until October this past year and it was, it was almost too far in the process. So, um, I think when we were closing out last, or closing out the final report for twenty twenty-three, we discussed meeting as early as maybe July or August.
Yeah, I mean, there's no reason that, to not meet sooner, because this is future stuff and we should kind of always be looking at that. Or have an idea at least. That's what I had.
Anybody else? On anything? Related? Alright, town report.
Okay. Um, one of the snow delays that we had somewhere between February and now, uh, created a, a little bit of a delay with our financial audit, I think it was originally scheduled for February and it was in the dead of a snowstorm, so. Um, they rescheduled and that field work started today, so we had five auditors in the building going through, they're gonna be here for a couple of days, so the office is a little bit congested and busy, but we're gonna get through it. Um, I met with Michael Kuster last week on the trustees of the trust funds, uh, they're continuing to invest. Um, the trust funds that are in their custody into short-term certificates of deposit to yield the best return on investment. Um, several of the CDs that they had established last year either matured in last month in April, and we have a few more that are maturing in August. Um, so we went through just plans for, uh, a bunch of the funds, including. Uh, the fire rescue vehicle and equipment fund, the highway truck, the revaluation, invasive species eradication and prevention. And the town building maintenance and repair, tricentennial fund and the police technology funds. Um, most of these are going to see, a significant, significant amount of those funds are going to be put into short-term CDs. Right now, anything less than six months is yielding about four and a half percent, so, um. I think for the most part, they're all going to be transferred into like two to three month CDs, and then of course, we'll, they'll look at it again when they meet next in July. Um, to determine if there's any more investing that needs to take place, but they're, they're on it, um, they're being good stewards of the town's money, so making sure that it's actually making some interest. Um, the trade value for the twenty twenty Ford Interceptor came in at seven thousand dollars, so the balance on the new police cruiser purchase is forty-three, four fifty-three. Uh, this is the amount that we removed from the police department's operating budget and agreed to fund out of ARPA. As of the middle of April, I don't believe the, the new truck, the F-one fifty that they're purchasing had hit the dealership yet, so that could be inbound at any time and then it just needs to be outfitted. Just for informational purposes, I received an application for a special event license for cruise night at Lyers. Uh, that's gonna be starting up May twenty-eighth and runs through August twenty-seventh, I'm just waiting on, I think, one more department head to sign off on, on their end of it, and then, uh, that license will be ready to go. They did put in a request to close Church Street on August twentieth, I think it was the third Tuesday, Thursday of the month. Um, it's something that they've been doing in years past, so I just figured I would put it out there, get the announcement out sooner than later.
It's only that one date to close?
It's only that one date.
It's like a larger car group comes in like a core group.
Yeah.
They park up the street.
So it's, it's never been an issue, we've tried to get the signage up, uh, beforehand, while in advance, and we'll get announcements out. August twentieth, correct.
Third Tuesday.
Um, Steve already updated on the twenty fourteen MAC, so I'm just gonna skip over that one. Um, I did a little bit more research into, um, the hand courier option for mail delivery. I spoke with Hope over at the post office just to see what it would require for that to happen. As of right now, they don't have any hand delivery stops in Nottingham, so she would have to get, uh, postal district manager to sign off on what they call a dismount. And she can initiate the request if we wish to proceed, um, I did want to just put a couple of things out there. This is not just a matter of us collecting mail here, this is going to be a matter of like, we're gonna have to update with all of our, our vendors, that mail stuff, um, anything, any correspondence, pre-printed letterhead. Envelopes, the website, we cannot have reference to that PO box anymore, because once we go to a physical mail delivery, then, um, it's gonna, it could cause. Carrier issues down the road, um, our distributor now is out of the, the Worcester Mass Distribution Center. So where everything comes into the Nottingham post office right now, they have a little bit more hands-on approach, where if they see something that gets sent out of town, they can grab it. And kind of delay it from going through to that distribution center, like if it gets put in the wrong mail slot. Um, if we're in a physical location as our addressee, then it could still end up. Like, they don't have the same ability to, um, stop that from happening, so we could have some mail deliveries there, I just wanted to put it out there. Uh, we are paying eighty-two dollars a year for our post office box, plus we have a second one. Um, I guess, over a decade ago, our PO box one fourteen is a really small box and our mail doesn't fit in that. So, instead of going through at the time and updating all of the applicable letterheads, et cetera, et cetera. Um, somebody had decided that we were just gonna keep one fourteen and have an additional larger box for our overflow, so that's how we're doing it, we're actually paying for the two. So, this is, this has obviously come up in the past as, you know, a question, but not necessarily in the same sense, so I just wanted to put that additional information out there. There is a possibility, as long as the postal district manager would sign off and approve them to do a dismount service for a hand delivery inside the building. Um, if you want me to go ahead and see if that's something that they would authorize, I can do that, or we can just keep things as is with the PO box for potentially.
I don't think we can spend the money on reprinting anything this year.
Right, so, yeah, what's our inventory on that stuff?
What is our inventory on that stuff? Um, and we have a ton of envelopes, I mean, it's just, it's, it's a matter of more or less changing things internally, um, we'd have to change the website, obviously, we'd have to change our software, like the tax bills that we generate, all reference the PO box, so. Uh, it's not something that we'd be able to do before the, the next tax billing, which is gonna be going on in the next couple of weeks, but. I don't know, I, I just look at it as, you know, maybe this is something that we can consider in the future, but is it absolutely necessary right now, we've already paid the post office box rent for the year.
Right, right, but, so it would probably be good to kind of time it.
Right.
You know, if we can just continue working on this. To coincide with the, before we pay the, uh, PO box next year or something, and maybe, you know, burn down our inventory of. Um, letterhead and that stuff. You know, just.
Is it needed?
It's probably a better secure. You know, for security reasons, it sounds like it was a good thing.
What, the physical?
No, having it here.
The old box would be much more secure.
I don't know.
It might, I mean, I would think, cause we got one person going to pick it up.
Yeah, as opposed to the mailman just bringing it to you.
But then it's, well, I guess.
Somebody's gonna sort it.
That's definitely more secure than somebody. Driving down the post office, picking it up.
That's, oh. Then you have all the people that are in, that are coming in the building, I don't know. Whether people in their office when the mail gets dropped off.
So what, and also what about PD too, they have a PO box.
They have their own PO box and, um, I have spoken with Fawn about it and they will keep it that way just for the security of the documents that are received, there's only. It's, it's a control thing. So, um.
What would the timing be, like you said, do you have to let or ask if it can happen and then?
I.
They could approve it?
I will have to. I will have to find out. When I talked to Hope, um, we didn't, she said, I think I had actually asked her that and she wasn't really sure. She's like, if you want, I can put the question out there. And I said, I'm not gonna move, I'm not gonna have you do that until I know that's the direction that we're moving in. I said, I was more or less just trying to get more information about the process.
Were we gonna have it, were we removed? Not just here, but the tax collectors, West Nottingham one? Remember that it was uh.
That, yeah, we should move both.
But then there was a potential delay in when it's stamped, because we already had issues with that, and when it's considered received, as opposed to if it's an in-town received. I don't know.
The tax collector goes by the postmark date on the envelope.
Which is when it goes in, when they take it at the end of the day or when it's received at the distribution center.
Could be the Worcester one.
Right.
You know, it could be any.
Like in, in that last case, it was a matter of it going from West Nottingham to wherever it went through and then coming back before it was postmarked when it came back.
Should've been postmarked at the distribution center, wherever it was.
Right, that would be the normal thing.
But that somehow missed that mark, but.
What do you wanna do on it?
I guess just find out the time, the timeline.
Yeah.
But beyond that, I don't think we can move. I just don't, I mean, I just know what it costs to print stuff.
No, right, right. I mean, right, we have to be conscious of that. It's a matter of if we can get the timing right, it makes sense.
And then I guess, understanding what your process would be here at the town office for processing.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just, I was thinking about it initially. I mean, we don't, right now, when we send out correspondence, most of it, um, any letters or whatever, we, we have the, the town letterhead already set up, so we just print to that. That, we do have some pre-printed envelopes, but all of the applications and um for zoning board, planning board, um, tax credits, exemptions, all of that correspondence, it's already pre-printed. It would be a matter of updating it on that. And of course, all of the accounts payable vendors. So I, I just looked at it from the that scheme of, you know, it is going to be a, a lot of um labor-intensive love for the beginning to an end result. Not saying that it can't be done, but. All right, so I will, I will find out what we're looking at for a timeline of approval and.
And go over, we're doing this for the overall savings or the overall security?
We're answering a suggestion that was made.
I'm just not sure. Like I said, I, we haven't had issues. I, I don't know the one that we had to do this year, which seems like it was a one-off, but I don't know. It just seems like a lot of work for, for what?
Well, that's the reason why I'm asking that question. You know, if you're gonna say we're gonna do all this work, you're gonna go all this, and it saves the town $180. Then I don't think it's worth the time and effort that we're even sticking on it right now, just talking about, even talking about it for $180. Right. And then to have to get the post office to come and sign off, whether they get somebody that can actually come in and then actually walk through the building to it, it almost sounds ridiculous.
So you're, well, you're gonna spend that and labor between all the updating of or in the payroll expense.
Yeah, it's, that's what I said. It's, if we can get the timing and work, great. If we can't, oh, well. There are a lot of moving parts.
All right, um, and then my last item that I have for you is our newest officer, James Thomas, um resigned from his position with the police department last week. So there are currently two full-time openings in the police department.
See, there's their budget item. I'm just kidding.
Now that I'm staffing for it. Did we get anything on why? That would be enough. Yeah.
Um, so I believe Vaughn does have
I didn't know she'd receive anything.
Some applicants that she's gonna be interviewing this week, I believe is what she told me, so hopefully we can.
Right. Yeah, so was there an exit interview or?
Um, I'm not sure. I'll have to find out from her. I haven't spoken with her since I heard about it. Um, and then you do have action items and general correspondence to review that I just included in my report. Um, one of the items in your signature file is Chief Vaughn Woodman needs the authorization to sign the agreements with the state of New Hampshire for the Potackaway Lake um details that the police department will be conducting.
So we need a motion. To get paid?
Yes. The police department provides a detail at Potackaway State Park.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So she has to sign the agreements with the state of New Hampshire in order to um get reimbursed for those details. So I'm requesting a motion to authorize her as to sign the agreements.
Make a motion to authorize Chief Vaughn Woodman to sign the agreements with the state of New Hampshire in regards to police details at Potackaway State Park.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second? Any discussion over there? No? All in favor?
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Decker.
Aye, John Moore.
Aye, Tim Daybrio.
Aye, Matt Schrelin.
In non-public session at your last meeting on the fifteenth of April, uh you discussed the request made by Sandra Vilchok to unseal the minutes of the non-public session held on March twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three. Um, you are not able to, you weren't able to make a decision until the next public session, so I am looking for a motion to either unseal those minutes or for them to remain sealed.
I will make a motion to keep them sealed, the minutes, non-public minutes from March twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second. Roll call. All favor?
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Decker.
Aye, John Moore.
Aye, Tim Daybrio.
Aye, Matt Schrelin.
Correct.
All right. They were never unsealed in the first place.
Correct.
The third one I've provided you with, updates, amendments to the personnel policy. We had reviewed these, um, not this entire board, but most of you had reviewed them back in October. There were some suggestions made by the interim town administrator, uh John Scruton, related to the payment of overtime for fire personnel. The personnel policy currently states that overtime is paid for anything over forty-five hours. Obviously, if they're working two twenty-four-hour shifts, we exceed that and we have three hours of eligible overtime pay per pay period. Um, so I went through, I just verified those. Um, we did change it to forty-eight hours. Overtime would not be paid beyond the forty-eight hours for the, the fire personnel. Not sure if you've had a chance to.
No, I wasn't sure what we're supposed to look at, because it wasn't on the agenda itself.
So under page nine, under overtime, a lot of the, the revisions that were made to this policy, uh there was reflection of days worked rather than hours and because different departments work different hours, like the police department works four ten-hour days. Um, the town staff works eight-hour days. The fire department works four, uh twenty-four-hour shifts. Um, a lot of the changes were recommended to change the day reference to hours. Um, so overtime firefighter scheduled to work forty-eight hours per week will be paid overtime pay at rate of one and a half times the regular rate of pay for all hours worked in excess of forty-eight in a seven-day period. I think that was the most significant change that needed to be made sooner than later, so we're not having that additional three hours of overtime potential. Even though the actually, I think the schedule still allows for overtime. The other highlighted recommend, recommendations throughout, we can either address those or just deal with the overtime issue for now.
So I learned in that um that workshop last week that the police chief and the fire chief can have their own personnel policy and it's according to these two different RSAs, one oh five, two A for police and one fifty-four, five for fire.
At, the police does have their own policies.
Okay, so how do we reflect that in here? You know, so does that, if the police has their own policies, they override these.
I guess it really depends on what's contained within the police policies. I mean, the, the town's personnel policies need to be able to alert an employee to what their pay expectations are, what they accrue for benefits, um, what disciplinary actions, so I, I would have to review what's contained within the police department's special policies.
Yeah, of course, I'm not.
But I think they coordinate the point
Oh, you would hold.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, yes, optimally, it would be great if we have one policy that handles everything and there's no need for exceptions. But we just have to be conscious of that.
So are you recommending that rather than incorporate them into the personnel policy, that there be a separate policy addressing the fire department?
I just wanted to talk about it.
Okay.
I'm not recommending anything at this point. I wanted us to be conscious of it and understand that, um.
Do you wanna read the police's policy?
I mean, it might be helpful, probably, but yeah, I mean, I didn't read through all these, obviously. I didn't even, because I wasn't sure what we're actually supposed to be looking at. After looking at it over the weekend.
So can we approve the, the overtime change for now and then we can look through the rest of it?
Yeah, I mean, I guess that makes sense that we need to do at least that minimally.
Right. So we're not paying overtime.
Right.
Only makes sense to do that.
Mm-hmm. So I'm okay with that.
Then we could have a workshop to deal with all the rest of this stuff.
I think that would make sense to do this through a workshop instead of, you know, we can or break them into pieces and kind of have a plan on what we're gonna look at. But I'm okay with doing a, that one um segment for the forty-eight hours for fire department.
Well, financially, that's the one that affects the town the most.
Right.
So it's one that should be addressed.
Right.
Really, for now.
Is it technically all the changes highlighted in red? Because some of that was in, in re, in regards to like vacation?
No, I think we just need to address the overtime on page nine.
Yeah, okay.
Right now.
So if you make a motion, it should just basically specify you know, in the personnel policy on page nine in regards to overtime. Changes that are being made.
Article four.
And that we're voting on.
All right, I make a motion to accept the changes for overtime relating to the fire department to the personnel policy in regards to page nine under overtime. Change being based on their schedule, those firefighters scheduled to work forty-eight hours per week will be paid overtime, uh.
Will not.
Overtime after forty-eight.
Will be paid at the overtime pay at the rate of one-half in excess of forty-eight hours in a seven-day work period.
Motion?
Second.
Steve's second. Any more discussion?
No.
Roll call, vote?
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Decker.
Aye, John Moore.
Aye, Tim Daybrio.
Aye, Matt Schrelin.
So that one part. Sticking on this for one more second, guys, um, workshop. Since I was just brought up. Do you wanna schedule a workshop now?
You can, sure.
Okay. So I'm looking for, guys, look. You know, uh do you guys wanna do it on a Monday night? It's like this, just one of our off Monday nights? Do another night would work? Is everybody good with Monday nights? I know your schedule changes.
It depends which date we pick and then I'll take a look.
Right, it depends on which state we pick.
I have no conflict with date, so you guys basically kinda
Yeah.
Kinda have to spearhead this one, which dates work the best for you guys, because.
Are we gonna try to split them out or are we gonna just try to take three personnel policies or what do you wanna?
Or go as far as we can on, or something, or just have a time period?
I think we should all have the, we got this one, we'll get the other, all the personnel policies in our hand. Everybody should do their due diligence before the workshop.
Right.
Um, and then as we go through, we go through and discuss it together. You know, if something you see that's proven to need change or you have questions on something, again, that'll be all discussed at the workshop. We've already did quite a bit with the town one. Those are obviously the highlights. You see there was already changes in there. Um, not that we're changing the other ones, but that we are trying to make sure that we are all in uniform, is what our job, I believe, should be for the workshop. You know, so there shouldn't be any glaring differences or changes, like the one with the hours we just saw. So that's how I think we should do it, unless somebody else has a difference in opinion. Please.
No.
Speak up. So what do we have? Throw some dates out, guys.
Can we do it this month, the thirteenth, which is next Monday? The following Monday, or the twenty-seventh will be Memorial Day observation?
Yeah, I, this, this Monday, I mean, this month will be bad for me if we're doing a Monday.
I'm available whatever day.
June, we're looking at June, but.
Does Tuesday work for everybody?
Yeah, which one we looking at here?
And do we wanna do it on a night? Tuesdays are terrible for me. Tuesdays are bad for me. Just in general.
So what evening is good for you?
Right.
Um, well, this month is tough.
Okay, so let's look at June then.
Yeah, then we start getting towards kids being out, not following. A lot of track schedules to.
June, I'm okay, except for Tuesdays and Fridays.
Monday, June tenth? Or Wednesday, June twelfth?
I'd prefer Wednesday, the twelfth. Only two days. They don't have a meeting, is the twelfth and the eighteenth, twenty-four.
I, I could throw out May twenty-ninth also. I'd be available. If that's
Wednesday, June twelfth is planning board, so.
That's okay.
Okay.
Can you do, if it's the twelfth, I can be here until nine fifteen or so and then I'd be going off for work. So depending on how lengthy it gets, I would just have to cut out, but I could be here for whenever we start.
Have a specific agenda and time period.
I'll cancel the meeting and I gotta cancel and be here. Big deal.
If we go the week before, I'm fine. Whatever. Anybody?
So June twelfth?
Twelfth.
That's fine.
Works for me.
Time?
There we go.
Six, six-thirty, seven?
Do you guys wanna do it earlier at six or six-thirty?
Yeah, six, we can stick with six-thirty.
Stick with six-thirty?
Okay.
Make that an open?
We'll be in conference room two, because planning board will be in here.
June twelfth. All right, so what do we wanna start with or for that? So we can prep.
Start a month and some time to go, but. Start a month and some time to go, but we're gonna get copies.
Read it cover to cover first.
Yes. Take your time, read, highlight, do what you need to do. We will also get a copy of the other ones, too, for us?
Yes.
Maybe we can have those distributed at the next meeting at the latest?
The copies of what?
The police.
Oh, yeah.
The other person, the policies.
I have one other one.
That way we can just make sure we're looking for All right, so where were we? We're all done with that?
Yep, item number four under action items. Alan has been working on pulling together some various quotes for the renovation of this room to convert to rec space, and then converting community room over to what will be potentially your conference room space. So he was able to pull together quotes from four different vendors, and as we're getting closer and closer to summer camp and it being an issue with startup, we figured it's time to start working on some of these. So the first thing that I'm presenting to you are quotes for painting. When he had these contractors come out here, he had them look at the building as a whole, just so we could kind of identify what we could do within our budget. I think the areas that we need to look at as priority right now, just based on what we have for building, maintenance, availability for funds, would be this building, the community room, which has not been painted in several years. I'm sorry?
You mean this room?
This room.
You said building.
Yes, sorry. Within the building, would be this room, the community room, which will be converted to conference room space, and recommendation to do the wall in the gym, just because if we're going to be putting new flooring down, we probably want to get those walls painted, especially where they took the flooring. Flows off before the floor gets done. I'm still waiting on one more quote for the flooring for consideration. Hopefully, we'll have those for the meeting on the 20th. But we have been through, he's met with all these contractors individually. Obviously, you'll see their, their prices are pretty much all-inclusive, so it's a little bit more difficult to break down, but some are more comparable than others. Certapro came in at a total, and I mean, this includes doing the hallways, the bathrooms, the present rec, the kitchen again, which I don't think the kitchen needs to be addressed. I mean, we just renovated that a few years ago, so that's fresh paint. So there's, there's plenty of things that we could break out of these quotations, but Certapro painters came in at $20,090.51 to do all of the interior offices on this side of the building. Conference rooms, entrance halls, trim, walls, doors. Painter one provided two quotes. The first quote is for $13,616.10. That included the foyer, the town office, conference room one and two, hallway, kitchen, bathroom hall, doors and jams. Option number two was to add in the gym, hallway, rec office, closets, doors, jams. That was another $17,692, so you're looking at collectively over $30,000.
For the same area?
Option three was Jesse Reed, his quote for conference room, the rec hallway, the long hallway, community room, rec offices. Large filing cabinet room would be conference room two, the foyer, bathroom, Nottingham's offices, and the gymnasium for a total of $37,872, so that one's a little bit higher than the other two. And Citywide, who is our contracted painting company, they gave me a quote last fall, just to do the gym, the hallway, the main entrance, the bathrooms, kitchens, conference room one, rec department, town offices, conference room two, planning and zoning, and that collectively was $17,280, but this was paint only, one solid color. It didn't require, it didn't include any prep work, trim, or doors. So what we would like to do at this point is at least get a contractor lined up, get on their schedule, so that when we're ready to finish up the right now, the plan is, is to continue on with the renovations in the community room to convert that space. We're going to complete that space, get that ready to roll out as an active conference room before any renovations take place in here, so this will likely be after summer camp session is done for the season.
Okay. So I mean, it's gonna take a while before they get to the finished product?
Yes. Right, right now, the community room is just, it's been cleaned out and renovation, or, you know, they've started to do demolition on the wall. We did have a load bearing wall that we had to have a structural engineer come in, and we're just waiting on his stamped plan so that we can make sure that that's covered, and then they'll be able to continue on with those. So I mean, I think that room is going to be, once we get the remaining wall removed, then it's going to be a matter of patching the back wall, removing those windows, and then doing the paint and the floor.
Okay, and then installing new AV?
AV equipment, right.
Okay, so we have to do that room.
We have to do that room first.
And when's the gym floor supposed to come?
I'm waiting on the third quote from a vendor. We have two quotes in right now.
So we had a quote, I saw him, Alan, the other day, and the color that they had chose wasn't even going to be available to ship till mid-June, when basically summer camp would be in here, so they're trying to find anything that can be installed between now and when the summer camps kick off, is what they're attempting to do.
Right, right. So if the plan is to get it before summer camp starts, that, you want to get the gym painted before that?
That's why I'm trying to get a contractor lined up, so we can
That would be the first room we do.
Right, that would be like the first room, not the conference room.
Right. Yeah, because we knew the conference room anytime.
Right.
Well, notice when we're starting here, they need to paint that, so that we can move into there.
Right, but that's gotta be the first thing that gets done.
Yeah.
And all the funding for this is from the Warren article?
For the painting is going to be coming out of a combination of rec revolving for this space and the building maintenance expendable trust fund, where we're talking about the gym, and then where you were talking about ARPA funds for the conference room conversion. So it's, it's a couple pieces from different pies.
So, okay, so the floor comes out of the?
The floor comes out of the Warren article for the gym only.
Yeah.
But then we need
What about the painting of the gym?
The painting of the gym would come from the building maintenance expendable trust fund.
Okay.
This room, Courtney was gonna fund for the reconstruction and painting of this room from rec revolving, and then the other one, we were gonna take the payment out of ARPA to pay that room.
And we have funds to do all this?
That's why we're getting the quote, so we can see. So to do that room, we need painting, floor, and the renovations that are taking place right now, which Alan Trant is doing with his team. And then the audio/video, which the audiovisual equipment, we have a cable franchise fund with $25,000 that will go towards new equipment upgrades.
Right.
How much is left in NAPR?
100.
After the cruise? Roughly?
Like 67.
Six, yeah. 65-ish.
Okay.
And we have to spend that within?
We do.
This year.
Ear, earmarked.
Right. Can we use any of that to paint that other room, or?
Yes.
Okay. So we should try and use that money first, if that's
Well, I, I think there's gonna be plenty of uses for that money. We have the library septic that we're dealing with.
Well, right, I mean, we got to make sure we have enough to cover that stuff, too.
Pretty much all expenses that have taken place for building maintenance up to this point, including the, the repair for the well system of the recycling center have just hit the maintenance line items in the operating budget. So once we get a better idea where we're at expenditure-wise, there'll be a request coming into you to release the withdrawal of some of those items out of the building maintenance expendable trust fund. Because that has to come from a, from you, or your agents to expend.
Yikes.
So you're looking to commit to one of these painters to at least get them on board and get them on the calendar to get started?
So if we go with the lowest bidder, that would be the company that was provided through Citywide, however, we're missing a piece of that being the doors and the trim. And then the next lowest bidder would be
That's not missing a piece, that's missing a lot.
Yeah, exactly. And then, so that would put Certapro next in line.
Certapro's gonna do some maintenance.
Yes.
They would do the wall prep.
And, but they're gonna, they have more things listed than we need to have done, really, right?
Right.
Yes.
So that's kind of, how does that, how is that gonna impact the quote?
We asked if they would do things piecemeal, and they said yes, they would. They are also willing to accommodate by coming in nights, overnights, and weekends, so that there's no delay in the services that we provide.
Can they, can they provide a more detailed quote, like in some of the other, like painter one has it, that this is how much this room's gonna cost, this room's gonna cost, this room's gonna cost?
I mean, the interesting thing, though, coming in, what, $13,000 cheaper than the other one, like if we were able to, I mean, it is at a relative bargain, I would call it, if you look at one.
Yeah, comparatively, yes.
So if you think, like, we might not need to, but at the same time, like, the building needs it, the hallways are drab yellow, like, if you can brighten it up, and that $20,000 price for all in, but
Right, but do we have all the funds to support that?
Between ARPA, between rec revolving?
You know, I, we don't know.
And I think, like, they're including, like you said, the cafeteria in that, the cafeteria doesn't need to be painted, so that's why, if we can get a breakdown.
And, and I'm sure that Courtney would appreciate us not hitting rec revolving, or hitting rec revolving as little as possible.
But deferring maintenance again has been our longstanding problem, so
Yeah, but, I mean, we're talking paint, too, and I don't know what, we can have people maybe volunteer or do some painting.
I'm tapped out.
Yeah, there's, volunteers are running short everywhere.
I would, I would come in for a painting party.
You don't have to.
Can I come up to the house? I'll have you come up my house, I'll even feed you.
Not
Oh, fine.
You'd have to feed me a lot, Steve.
I'll feed you a lot.
So do you want us to at least make a motion to approve moving forward with Certapro for certain rooms, or do you want to? I know that we're waiting for a breakdown, and we might exclude certain areas later, but you want to get on the books, and we don't meet for another two weeks, and then we're just we gotta
Right.
do something. So what would you like?
That's what I would be looking for, and my recommendation would be to award it to Certapro. I can get the breakdown, and we can move forward with specified.
That we want.
Right.
What are they gonna require from us? Like, if I paint this room, I mean, obviously, we gotta move everything out, or, I mean, they're not gonna take
We're looking to paint that from first.
That's all gonna be coordinated.
Whatever.
That's gonna be coordinated through Alan.
Because that's, you know, there's lots
Yeah, we'd have to take everything off the walls, and move everything into the center of the room.
The toughest one will be the gym and getting the coordination for removing all the pads and stuff that they just built and put in there and stuff like that.
You might not want to do this room until we've done the renovation.
Right.
Do your petitions and
Right.
This would be like the very last thing.
Do it once.
And the, right, it's gonna change the quote, because if it was quoted for what we have here, there's gonna be more walls.
I think they're just gonna be partitions. I don't think it's gonna be
Okay.
Okay.
Just like a door, a door right there, right?
Yeah.
Cubical stuff, all right.
Do you want it set to not exceed a certain dollar amount, knowing that it's gonna go down? We've done that before, like, a contract with somebody not to exceed a dollar amount, we can start with that. So I'll make a motion to approve the paint quote from Certapro painters not to exceed the $20,090.51 for painting for the community center, knowing that we will reduce that cost of reduction in scale.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? Here none? Roll call vote?
Hi, Steve Walsh.
Hi, John Decker.
Hi, John Moore.
Hi, Tim DeBrio.
Hi, Matt Sherlin.
Moving on to mail and correspondence. There are a few emails that came in. Responses have been provided to some, but not all. Do you want to just go through and talk them out with you?
Yeah.
First one is, I have an email from Jay Velchok Senior dated 4/23/2024 regarding the Nottingham Fire Rescue Department's schedule at the proposed 42 hours. Public deceptive statements, official complaint. Would you like me to read the email into the record, or would you like to?
Sure.
Reference A, 15th April 2020, 2024, Board of Selectmen meeting is captured in related YouTube video beginning at approximately 1:07 mark. B, attached NFRD Schedule 1 as of the 13th of April 2024. My observation is captured in Reference A video, Board of Selectmen member Sherlin publicly repeatedly provided deceptively wrong information related to NFRD staffing, station staffing. Attached, Reference B, refuse Sherlin's repeated statements. Request Chairperson Moore to investigate and report for the public, for record to public the results of statements made by Mr. Sherlin, and report any and all resultant censure actions taken by Board of Selectmen for this apparent violation of ethical behavior and public trust. And there is an attached copy of the schedule that's posted at the fire station from March through May, March through June.
And then we got the color-coded one.
Well, this is just in regards to
I have followed up with Deputy Chief Patterson and got a copy of a color-coded schedule reflecting the six full-time positions if filled, and how that would look based on their schedule change of one on, two off, one on, four off.
And this, right, this looks like it's got a lot of part-time in it.
Which question?
I don't know how this is supposed to work.
Well, if you're on the schedule with per diem officers, I believe, at this point.
Right, so
But to be fair, there's probably not a firehouse in the state in the hands that's not looking for help.
No, I know. But, I mean, that's why we have, we have six full times, and
When we're staff fully, we'll have six full times.
Right, but, right. We're just looking at physicians, not actual personnel. So I'm just trying to understand how this one on, two off. So, I'm just trying to understand how this one-on, two-off, I know that, and then it's like, one-on, so it's one-on, eh, one-on-two, one-off, one-on, just four-off. One-on-two, you know, it's, to me, I'm not, so like, so, full-time one works the first Monday, doesn't work till Saturday, has one day off, then works Tuesday. Just doesn't seem to be this, it's not, it doesn't fit as it's described here, one-on, two-off, one-on, four-off. That's why I'm confused.
What do you mean?
It does, just that one. So, I mean, like, if you look at full-time one in that, first Monday through-
Okay, Sunday, Monday.
Monday, so, works on Monday, not again until Saturday, and then they have two days off, work that following Tuesday, four days off Sunday. Follow it across.
It goes sliding.
It goes sliding? Yeah.
So, what I did was I broke it down by weeks, I just did eight weeks, so the first week there are one, two, three, four, five full-timers working forty-eight hours, one works twenty-four, and then supplemented with part-time to cover the additional. Week two, four are working forty-eight, two are working twenty-four. Week three, four on forty-eight, two on twenty-four. Week four, five on forty-eight, one on twenty-four. Week five, four on forty-eight, two on twenty-four. Six, four on forty-eight, two on twenty-four. Week seven, five on forty-eight, one on twenty-four. And week eight is five on forty-eight, one on twenty-four.
So, how many full-timers would we need to make this work completely with no part-timers?
We don't have the funding for that.
No, no, I'm just, I understand that, I'm just trying to understand what that would mean. You know, cause that's really what the schedule's kind of dictating, to have two full-time, to have two people on duty always. It looks like we probably need nine full-timers, I'm kinda guessing.
But you also have volunteers.
Hmm, right, but if the point is we're paying two people to be on duty always anyway, that's what the schedule has, we just filling it with part-timers. So, what's the difference if we're paying part-timers or full-timers?
Benefits.
And the, the pay rate, we actually have a pretty low part-time pay rate.
And we can, we can get them, and why don't we have all part-timers?
Cause there was a Warren article that said after six full-timers.
Right, that's, exactly.
It seems too, that a lot of department, like, are part-timers, are full-timers somewhere else, and then our, our full-timers are filling in part-time somewhere else, so I mean, I don't know how many actual firefighters are on the seacoast, it seems like they're just kinda moving around.
So, how do we know that they're not coming off a twenty-four hour shift?
I mean, I don't think we do know, I mean, this is for, like, our staffing or whatever, I don't think there's-
How do you know the other fire department that they're going to, to come off our twenty-four hour shift?
Right, I, I don't-
You're asking the same question, so-
Mm-hmm.
I think the one big difference between the, the old schedule and this one is we have one of our full-timers on every day, um, and then it gets filled in potentially. The other way was one to two full-timers, depending, cause, right, we only have four full-timers, but generally, we try to have one of our full-timers on every day, filling in with part-time on Sunday was how was one. And then we're down from that, so, this one has a, I don't know, th- this is the schedule they picked.
I mean, if it's gonna work, then that's fine, but it just seems, it seems like there's a lot of part-time in there that I don't think people were expecting.
I didn't understand, but I guess I'm, I'm gonna say-
So, we, so, week one, there's three, three part-time shifts. Week two, there's four part-time shifts, week three, there's four part-time shifts. And then, week four, there's back to three, so it's like, we have-
Why does it matter if there's a part-time or not, as long as there's coverage on the force? I mean, that's the, when I look at the schedule, I look to make sure that we have coverage, and as long as we have coverage and we have somebody there, that's the benefit of what we're doing.
Right, but I think, I think we were led to understand that our coverage with six full-time people would cover six days, pretty much.
Oh, back when the, back when the original Warren article was out?
Yes.
Is that what you're trying to?
Yes.
I wasn't, I under the impression that that was gonna be it, but that was-
It's not in the Warren article.
No, it's not in the Warren article, but that's more of the impression that we had gotten.
Although, again, I'm, I'm, that, when you say "we," I mean, that might be what you, I did not get that as the interpretation I got, when we had that Warren article, was that the six were basically coming in to give better support we needed for where we're lacking in volunteerism. That's the reason why it was purpose four, so that it was gonna take a big burden off the thing, and that's why we had to go with the six full-time. It wasn't gonna cover and fix every full-time position and have twenty-four hour coverage, you know, we had to still rely on things, but this way it took a burden off that. So, I feel like what we see here, with the coverage that they have and how it's executed, that, you know, it's sufficient for what we're gonna need and what we're doing. That's how I look at it.
It's good to have the coverage, I appreciate having full coverage. So, what do we need?
Addressing the complaint, is there any response that you would like to give?
I have none.
Shall we move on?
Yes, please.
Next email is from Kathleen Simpho on behalf of the Nottingham Community Newsletter. The last and final publication to be printed is, um-
Just received. Just received. It's unfortunate.
Very unfortunate.
It is unfortunate.
I hope they do write a Warren article, to see if it gets funded that way.
I like getting mine in the mail.
I had correspondence with Tina Jennings regarding the work that the Highway Department was doing primarily on the lake roads.
Just, I'm sorry, back to the, so there was a request in that email to refund the sponsors for that newsletter, is that something we need to approve?
I think I'm just, I don't think I have those, those advertising vendors yet, right?
Not yet.
Not yet. Thank you, Kathy. So, we'll get those processed when they come through.
Here's a question for you guys, we could discuss a little later on, but I'm just gonna bring this up, you know, a Warren article, would we wanna sponsor the Warren article for the newsletter, or would you want it to be privately written as a Warren article? Just a little poll.
Alright, so the problem is, if we recommend it, well, I guess, if the Budget Committee recommends it, then it has to be within the four percent cap. If the Budget Committee doesn't recommend it-
If a private citizen recommends it, you mean?
Well, it, but they'll still have to recommend or not recommend whether it comes in as a petition or not, because it's money.
Yeah.
So, it may have to be that the Budget Committee doesn't recommend it to stay under the cap, um, but it can still be a Warren article. You know, there's, that's-
The amount from one year to the next is only on recommendations from the Budget Committee.
Yes.
Right.
So, they would potentially not recommend it, but-
Right.
That just seems foolish, but-
It does, I agree one hundred percent.
So, excuse my disgust of what my, my way I'm thinking right now, it just seems-
Unless we learn something when, um, the people from-
The Budget Committee cannot recommend an amount to be raised by taxation in excess of four percent of the prior year's approved budget.
Right.
We just, we can probably discuss this later, but to go on that, they didn't recommend certain articles, so then technically that would have lowered the, but then we were still including them up to that percent.
We were including, yeah, so, when it ended up getting approved, it was below four percent anyway.
Right, it just got approved by whatever-
Gotcha.
-got voted for.
Right, cause then we had it all packaged, and then it went through its approval, okay. Uh, I think we can cover this when we get closer to the budget season, that would be fine.
I was just taking, cause of-
Sponsoring it if we wanted to.
Because of what was written inside the request, it's always why I kinda just brought it up.
And then we can figure out what the exact amount is if we get to the end of the year and we have four thousand dollars of ARPA money that needs to be quickly spent, we can, you know, there's-
I mean, the biggest challenge is gonna be either five hundred thousand dollar road Warren article that didn't pass. And so, next year's budget, again, can't go up, over four percent of the tax cap, and now we, we had that Warren article, it's not even included, next year's gonna be just as messy as this year.
Well, we'll get through it.
Figure it out.
So, I've included correspondence between myself and Tina Rollins regarding, I'm sorry, Tina Jennings, regarding, um, road maintenance work that was done, and I have spoken with Steve about the work that was done, I know that there was some concern about maybe getting too close to private property and removing brush and creating ditches, um, I think he somewhat identified some of that vaguely in his presentation to you earlier.
Has he talked to her, though?
No, I don't believe he has.
Could he?
Thank you.
Could he?
Yes.
Okay, cause I don't understand, like-
I, I've copied him on, actually, no, I don't think I did. I think I've given him copies of this, so, um-
Could you have him reach out to the, thank you.
He's very vague with his answer. I've been in touch with Steve, I'm Eric Jennings, and, uh, he's very vague, uh, I don't wanna get, I don't wanna tread on whatever we got here, I just heard about vice neighbors, there's a lot of-
We got the letters, uh, and we got the emails, and everybody had a chance to read all the emails. I read them.
Yep, mm-hmm.
I think we did, you guys did do better at getting back to Tina, she's read a couple of them.
Well, Ellen did get back, sent some emails.
She sent out, she sent out a couple, hadn't heard back for a while, which, I get everybody's busy, but, uh-
I, I think it was when she escalated it to the Board of Selectmen that it got addressed. Yeah.
So, who we are addressing it? I read what you wrote, I appreciate what you wrote back, um, and after our conversation with him tonight, um, again, we should have probably been a little bit more incited on this one, but since we know nothing else is gonna be continuing on that road, um, if there's something that needs to be done or fixed, we should have a correspondence with the app, the complaint, to see what we can do to, if something was damaged or fixed.
Okay.
And that Mr. Rollins should be in contact with them.
What is the load?
Siemens Point.
Thank you.
Actually, all the roads he's been down, they're actually, if you've been down there, you can see it's pretty, it's pretty non, it looks pretty messy. He just pushed them back and made a mess. On every road, big question.
I've been down everyone.
I, I have too, and you see those big rocks? They weren't there, you push it over, piles of dirt, it's this left, nobody knew anything.
He made some, some different changes on the road that we haven't normally been seeing in the past quite a few years.
I think we need material to fill in the holes, not just widen, nobody's been out there.
It's a drain, Eric, before, before, I mean, how we, protocol, Eric, if you wanna wait to the end, we can have a public comment, you can sit up here, before, to just wait to the end, then we'll have you sit up front for a public comment, instead of speaking out about it right now, and then we'll go from there. Continue, sorry.
Skip Severance Head requested some information, which I responded to, and I was looking for clarification on number two, he provided that in response, I have not responded further, not sure if you had a review to that, or anything you wouldn't, you would like to add? I stapled all your correspondence together, I had a fight with the photocopier.
Why don't I have that? I know I read it.
It's in, just- It's in the complaint package, the complaint has its own package.
I got too much stuff, got it. Sorry.
No, it's fine, just, there's a lot of stuff here. So, if I understand this right, Skip got the information he needed, but he has to rethink his question, second question.
Which is, you know, forward, it's the first one, the typed out Skip one, is the rethought out one. It goes in backwards chronologically a few.
Yeah, no, I know.
I provided the voting results, I was looking for clarification, what he was, like, picked the second question, and got the full response back. So, I haven't responded further with information about what complaints there may be.
And that would be part of the non-public that we voted not to unseal.
Seems like we beat this horse right to death.
Yep. Are you looking for us to repeat?
You are copied, so I'm making sure that you're copied, you've had a chance to review the correspondence, and you can add if you would like to.
You know, without going, not being able to go in more detail on this, but there's information here that's missing that would make this to answer a lot of the statements. So, I read it, I understand where he's coming from, but there's more facts involved that aren't privy to answer the questions. So...
Could the board at least tell the public what the subject matter is, please?
Sure. So Mr. Skip Severance wrote a nice email to us, and again, this was attached, was going on about the previous fire chiefs' votes or members of the things, and information that he found, and what was voted on over the course of years, and listing of, I mean, I don't care if this even, I mean, trying to think of the proper way I want to respond to say this without being...
Okay, it's me.
If it was only just me and Skip, but that's not the case. So it doesn't matter, it says, you know, he just answered a bunch of questions, like, you know, it would appear, you know, he's, Skip is stating his opinion, and this is what it is. It's your opinion of what he felt. The conclusion of our decision about the previous fire chief, and what this board came to make a decision about. And he brought up line, items here, which he thought was prudent. But there was probably underlying issues, which I'm not gonna go into, which could answer a lot of these questions. I don't know how to properly answer the question without going into non-public.
Here on the side of caution.
That's...
I wasn't looking for specifics, if that's you.
I, I get, I, that's how you wrote it, I wasn't sure if you were not looking for specific, or if you were looking for, just, or if this was just a general statement that you wanted to put out.
Five? No, 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 that statement is just to provide background as to why I'm looking for the number of whatever is that I may not be able to say. I don't know. Looking for the number of written complaints.
Right, you can say that, but...
Well...
That's an employee.
You can, right, you can ask that question, but whether or not, we can't necessarily provide that.
I'm asking the question. If you tell me no, fine.
No.
I'll conclude on my own.
Everything that you brought up here, again, again...
I say we move on.
Move on for now.
Sure.
Gene Reed had emailed with a question about withdrawals that were made from the Revaluation Capital Reserve Fund. I responded back, I provided you a copy of the response, because it came into the Board of Selectmen Public Comment mailbox. I copied you on it, if you needed to add anything to that, or Gene is in attendance, so I'm sure he'll follow up if he has further questions. And then the last one, I followed up on a request from Jay Vilchok Senior on the charity bond, which town officials are covered under that, they're outlined in RSA 41:6, so I consulted with Primex, and again, that's what they refer to, so I just outlined the positions within the Town of Nottingham that are covered under the Town's Public Officials Bond or Charity Bond. It's the Town Clerk, Deputy Town Clerk, Tax Collector, Deputy Tax Collector, Treasurer, Deputy Treasurer, the Bookkeeper as designated. She's delegated authority by the Treasurer to complete some of the Treasury functions, such as reconciliations. The trustees of the trust funds, and the Library Trustees, including alternate trustees, are the positions within the Town of Nottingham, covered under that.
Pro RSA.
And that is the last of email correspondence. There was a few mail items that came in. We have the Shoreland application for New Hampshire DOT's Project 40612, which is the New Hampshire Route 152 Bridge Over North River Replacement. Rockingham County's Fiscal Year 2025 Proposed Budget and Public Hearing Notice was included in the mail. New Hampshire DES for an Alteration of Terrain Permit for Pawtucket Ridge, Map 69 Lot 17, you're copied on that. And Tracy, our Tax Collector, has to notice the New Hampshire Board of Tax and Land Appeals of the date that the final tax bill was issued for 2023, so a copy of that notification was in there as well.
In the folder over there.
Yep, in the yellow folder.
And I do believe we have some assessing to approve.
Is ready to move on to the assessing part?
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions on the intent to cut? Or the intent to excavate the cut, or the, I can speak to the voluntary land merger if there's any questions about it, but it's pretty much...
It seemed pretty straightforward, I've been through it.
It's pretty straightforward. Anybody want to make any motions?
I'll make a motion.
If you have any questions ahead of time.
I'll make a motion to approve the intent to excavate for Map 10, Lot 12.
Second.
Motion to the second, roll call.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Decker.
Aye, John Moore.
Aye, Tim Daybrill.
Aye, Mr. Hume.
Make a motion to approve the intent to cut from Map 23, Lot 11.
Second.
Motion to the second, roll call.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Decker.
Aye, John Moore.
Aye, Tim Daybrill.
Aye, Mr. Hume.
And I make a motion to approve the application for voluntary merge, merger of Map 1, Lots 92, 93, and 94.
Second.
Motion to the second.
Aye, Steve Welch.
Aye, John Decker.
Aye, John Moore.
Aye, Tim Daybrill.
Aye, Mr. Hume.
Our review of action items from last year, last meeting. Since we started there, the Town Beach, have we heard anything back about that?
No, I emailed Susan Lowery on two separate occasions last week. I have no response back from her. She's supposed to be working on an agreement with the property owners.
I don't believe the property owners...
For the beach access road.
Is it gonna be addressed to us then, to the property owners, or is she going directly to the property owners?
She is going to draft up an agreement that would outline the terms of the Town's use of the road during the prescribed period. And then she'll have to get input from the property owners for any stipulations they want to put in place.
Who is she?
Attorney Lowery, Susan Lowery.
And the property owners who own the road that goes out to the Town Beach. Well, there, there's also another issue about that, too.
With the fact that they can't access the beach right now, because there's trees down.
Absolutely. Who's paying to clean up that?
They're on their property. The property owners do not have any intention of cleaning them up themselves. I know the, the state is going to take care of trees for their access to the dam.
But not the road into the dam.
No.
Because they can't, but how can the state, the state can't get to there?
They can't get to the dam.
Right.
Unless they're gonna fly in.
Well...
So I have the, I have the person's name that maintains the dam.
To do maintenance.
Right, but if they're not doing any maintenance, I, that dam's been, it was redone a couple of years ago. They just gotta put stop blocks in, or what, actually, it's just a wheel now, it just cranks. So somebody can walk in and control the dam.
I think there was some other, there was other stuff that they want, trees that are in the general vicinity of the dam, that they wanted to be, take care of, that they felt were hazardous.
Yeah, they might walk in and take care of that, too.
They wanted to bring a tree company in to go in there, clean up those, but not the tree company to come clean the road to get to the dam.
Well, that's kind of hard to do without the other...
I have the contact information for the gentleman, for the Dam Bureau. I'm gonna reach out to him, find out exactly what their scope is going to be, and then we are less than four weeks away from the beach potentially opening.
That's the reason for the conversation right now.
What does the dam people want?
Nobody knows.
So, we were saying, are there trees down near the dam that go?
Yes.
No, not access, but, okay.
Well, there's stuff that I guess supposedly might, I probably think are around the dam, area around the dam that need to be cleaned up and fixed, and...
Yes, it's the state wants you to...
That's the state does, but the state doesn't, the state doesn't want to have help to get into that area. They want somebody else to pay for them to access that area. But, we can't have the public going down a road that's not safe either. And with trees hanging over the road...
You can see from the road, is there a tree right over there?
You can see it right from the road. So, issue number one. And the tree's on one person's property, then goes across another person's property, which then possibly goes across the road when is accessible for the Town through Memorial Day and Labor Day. So three entities. Because it came off somebody else's property.
So you up a tree, yes?
Yeah.
So you've reached out to the state?
Yes. No, I have the contact information. I have to reach out to them. I was hoping that I was gonna have forward progress with legal, so, you know, could say, hey, you know, as we're going through this process, maybe we can factor in some consideration for, I'm at a standstill at the moment. So I will reach out to the state, find out what exactly they're going to do, if anything.
Okay.
I'll probably have to have the Highway Director meet with the property owners and at least do like an initial assessment of what we're looking at.
We aren't equipped as a town.
I know.
That is a hard expense, which we don't have.
Yeah, it's gonna be like $20,000, $18,000 to take care of that.
Yeah, we don't have that expense. It might come to the fact that the Town Beach does not open due to the expense of getting the road open and ready for the town. Sorry to do the matter of bad news, but that's what happens.
Would we...
We also don't have, we can't expend public funds on a private...
Ah, right, well, another reason, so...
So I think at our next meeting, depending upon any progress that you've made, we'd have to take a vote to whether or not to open, or is that up to us? Is that up to the Rec Department as far as to open the beaches for this year? Or delay the opening?
I think they should be part of the conversation. So I will put that on for the 20th meeting.
Recycling hours.
Uh, yep. Probably. Are we done with our action items? Anybody want, even more discussion about that?
No.
Okay. Recycling hours, the guys at the recycling center, when I spoke to them last, would like to keep the schedule from 9 to 5, and not go to the summer schedule of 11 to 7. Or...
Yeah, 11 to 7 Thursdays.
Yeah, when I talked to them, it was just the opposite. They wanted to go to the 11 to 7.
No.
You talked to?
Wayne and Art, and what's the other one?
Yeah.
Oh, boy.
They definitely...
I was literally just there two weeks ago, we sat outside, and we had the conversation. And they literally told me they wanted to keep it 9 to 5, all, every three days.
What, so...
I don't think we have any statistical data that can show us like what the volume of traffic is moving the extending the hours on Thursdays until 7:00 PM that we can go back on. I looked back through to see if Sean had any type of recording.
We don't know with that stuff.
Right, what do the taxpayers expect? You know, they've been used to having the seminar hours. I know that they would probably prefer to have that
A lot of people have become accustomed to the transition May 1st. I disrupted that apple cart last week by delaying the transition. Obviously, it wasn't a permanent until we could have this conversation, get it out there. Maybe we can get some input from the public as to what they would see. I, I would approach it that if you are going to stay with a year-round schedule, then maybe you need to adjust the hours accordingly. Maybe open up earlier in the morning to accommodate people. I mean, 9 to 5 is a typical work schedule. So it is going to make it extremely difficult for...
So, I frequently use the recycling center, and I know like now you're hitting summertime, people are going away more on the weekends, especially as school gets out. And when these hours came around originally, we had more days open, and then we truncated down, but then like the appeasement was, in the summertime, we'll stay open a little bit later, obviously it's...
Well, it used to be, there was always an evening hours anyway before that, before it was truncated.
Right, so I'm for maintaining the summer hours at 11 to 7?
I'm for maintaining the summer hours, too, because we have nothing to back up this, other than, you know, they were hired for that period, knowing that. So there's nothing to back up the change at this point. We could change it from 12 to 7. It's only taking an hour off that schedule, but...
Why do we need to take away that hour? They, they don't want to be there at 7, that, they're, they've come to the conclusion that they want to like leave at 5 and, and close it up. Instead of...
They said, they said something different.
They did. After reviewing all the people coming in, they...
So the two weeks they changed it to, turn, turn, change it to and saying, oh...
So they realized a lot of people came on Thursday evenings.
I bet there's not a lot...
No, they haven't been open. They haven't been open.
They've been kind of pulling people.
Yeah.
I don't know if that many people come that early. Usually people are gathering their materials or whatever, it's not like you're, you might hit it first thing on Thursday morning, but...
From what he just said, if they've been doing that, guess what? We'll stick with the 11 to 7.
Okay, so as of this week, summer hour schedule will roll out, so they will be open on Thursday from 11 to 7, 9 to 5, Friday, Saturday.
And maybe have them...
And that will be until October.
Have them start tracking it, just, I mean, because I don't want, I, I mean, if they're sitting there from 5 to 7, and there's, you know, 10 people that come in, is that worthwhile?
They could be doing other things, too.
Right, they, yeah.
But if you're open to the public, and there's no public coming in, why not, if it may make more sense to be open in the morning? That's all I'm saying, if they want it, if they want it, if it's what the public wants.
Well, I think this is probably to help the working person who doesn't get out of work till 5.
Right.
Gives them a couple hours to get down there and...
Without killing it, a weekend if they're traveling.
Right, they're gonna go away for the weekend, now they got a hold there.
But why do we just do it in the summertime?
Because at nighttime, in October...
It's too dark.
This is all, right.
Correct, we don't have a flight.
Right, we don't have the, the lighting.
Yeah. It's places that are safe enough during the day and overnight at night.
So with that being said, we're gonna have them work to 5:15 or 7:15, so they can close the gate at 5? Is that a quarter of 5?
As of right now, all the signage says that they close 15 minutes prior to, the gates close 15 minutes prior to the closing time, so 4:45, 6:45.
I'm perfectly fine with that.
Yeah.
Just like everybody else, when your time's up and you're over, I mean...
Okay, well, I presented the request for consideration, there is no change. Summer hours will roll out this week, formal announcement. Thank you.
Okay. So what happens when you think three weeks off?
Hey.
So now this, uh, second part of our general business was our budget status review for quarter one.
Is this just, so this ends March 31st, or is it end April 29? Okay, that's what I thought, but...
So it's a little more than that. So it's a little more than the first quarter.
Quarter one, so.
Sorry.
Yeah, well, it's supposed to be quarter one, but we got a little more information, so it's quarter one.
I was reading off this here. What am I doing, reading off the agenda?
The the things in parentheses are overages.
Correct.
Want to verify that. And what are your highlighted items?
Um, highlighted items are obviously overages, either a line item that didn't have something budgeted within, or something that's starting to show over expenditure. For the most part, they're minimal. As you get into planning and zoning, we're starting to see advertising costs. Those have to be expensed to somewhere. We're obviously seeing the applicant paying for that portion on the revenue side. We're going to have to journal entry it out of the operating budget, because we agreed that if it was an applicant fee pays, it's almost like a due to, due from. It shouldn't be hitting a line item, but it is right now because it has to go somewhere. Um, so those will be worked out throughout the year. Uh, when you get into general government buildings, we have a lot of building repairs and maintenance that have already taken place. A lot of it has to do with the, the library and the recycling center with the well issues up there. These are items that I talked about earlier. We'll eventually summarize them, or actually detail them more and put them forward for a request for withdrawal from the building maintenance expendable trust fund where appropriate, so that those line items aren't. But again, they needed to be in a placeholder somewhere, so they're over expending those lines.
Would the thing that John was talking about, having the escrow fund, would that eliminate the need for this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, for the, um, the planning board.
Planning and zoning for the.
Yep, the application.
Advertising and stuff like that, okay. That's a next year thing, but.
Everybody else, all the other departments seem to be.
Well, that'd be a next year thing. Once we talk about it, we can send, the planning board talks about it and goes through the things. We can change them right there, then send it to this board here for approval to get changed. Then they're changed effective immediately. So it won't be something that, we can, we can change the budget this year on that.
Okay.
Well, for that, how expensive, is that what I mean?
Most of the departments are in pretty good shape as far as their percentage remaining. Um, the highway department was the first one that we identified that was a lot lower than it should be. We're already a quarter of the way through the year, so we should have somewhere in the neighborhood of sixty-five to seventy percent of the budget left over, and they're at forty-three point six five remaining. Um, overages from the winter subcontracted plowing and, um, hired equipment. Where some of the items on the part-time part-time salary is over budget, but that was kind of offsetting the fact that we did have a vacant position for a period of time, so I look at that as kind of a wash. I have spoken with Steve directly, um, told him that, you know, obviously we cannot hire equipment out at this point. We have to utilize what we have available for us to use. I don't think there were any other problematic items identified. Um, there was a coding issue on the, the recycling center. We don't have any full-time staff. There was payroll that got applied to that line item. It just needs to be moved into the part-time line, so. You'll see an overage there, but technically it's just reflective of part-time wages.
Um, generally, does Betsy forward like the manifests to the department heads, or at least their pieces of them? So that they can verify those expenses?
Each department head has to sign off on their own invoices.
Okay, so they do sign off on their own, okay. Because that.
There should be an initial or a name or a code amongst all the invoices. Uh, the only ones that don't, that just typically get approved are like utilities, um, electric.
Well, it's more of them after they were entered to verify that the entries are done right.
That was a process that I cleaned up after we went through the default budget workshop. There were a lot of discrepancies, and I just said, rather than her taking the brunt of it and taking the responsibility for potentially miscoding something, um, I told her that I wanted every department head to sign off on their own individual invoices, so we are doing that moving forward, or since March.
Okay.
Um, it's, it's a process that should be taking place anyways. If they're setting their budget, they have to be responsible for this.
Right, which is why I was asking if they got sent back to them.
Or do we consider ourselves having a department head for the recycling center, or are you handling that?
I'm handling that. Yeah, I'm signing off on those approvals.
Is that figure right on the shim and seal coat for this year?
No, that was actually, um, road work that was done before.
Steve, where are you?
The last storm, and it got coded to that, it got coded to that thinking it was road reconstruction work, but it was more ditch work and everything that just needs to go into the
Yay.
The already over hired equipment line.
Do we send this out to the department heads?
Um, so, the process Betsy had to get the default budget entered into the system, which this is our BMSI accounting system. Um, normally she puts it in that spreadsheet that's a little bit easier to flow, follow through, so.
This seems pretty simple.
It is very simple.
I mean, it says percentage left balance remaining. I don't know.
That's not zero.
Well, obviously, somebody thought the other worksheet was a little bit easier to work with. I disagree. I like this better, but, um, so she just got this entered in, got the expenses posted to it. I know, um, I, I did go over the highway department budget with Steve last week. Um, Fun has her own copy, and my intention is to meet with the department heads on a regular monthly basis and just continually watch this. I mean, we're, we have to watch every penny that's spent.
Well, I mean, the yeah, I mean, you're looking through it. It's like you know, this should be given out, you know, monthly or whatever to them, just so that they can see and just see the line item, say, hey, okay. I mean, this is a black and white statement. It says, hey, listen, oh, maybe we gotta watch on this one here, or do something here. I mean, it makes it, I don't see why.
Most of them are already requested from Betsy directly.
Good.
I just don't know what the, how often it is. I'd like to see them monthly.
What I don't want to see is Mr. Rollins here in front and having to say, hey, you're at forty-four, whatever, percent left on May sixth. Um, I don't want to have another department head coming at the same thing there. That's just not reading.
Uh, one question, on the building cleanup, it looks like it's only going to be two hundred fifty dollars spent out back, but I know they've spent more than that.
On the what?
The cleanup out back?
Hmm, we just haven't been dealt for it, yeah.
Okay.
We have, um, we have twelve hundred dollars into the labor for removing what was removed out of there so far, and I have the cost of the, um, the twenty-yard container that's sitting out back. I have to do a swap on that. So I think that was like a six hundred dollar rental. So we'll have another one. It's full now to capacity, and we have to, we have the, um, suspended ceiling framework and all the extra insulation that's going to get thrown in the next.
Just a question on that, like if we separate it like for the framework out back, like some stuff like that, does that make at all sense? If we like, we're ripping everything down, all the crappy tiles, we get rid of that, we're paying for that. Do we get paid for metal from the recycling center? Like if we take the metal and bring it to the recycling center and put it in our own dumpster and then ship that off and get paid money back for it?
We should.
I'm just saying, instead of paying to have it shipped away in a twenty-yard dumpster.
Right, we should.
Our own dump trucks, we just have the metal all put in a pile. We have the F five fifty come over, we throw all the metal in, and then that goes over and or it could just take a special trip right up to Harding's. Harding's. But I, I think that maybe we want to spend a little bit of extra time to, if pennies count, let's get paid instead of paying for what we're doing. Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know if there's anything else besides metal, but the framework would definitely be something.
Right.
I don't know.
Maybe it reduces one more story, one more bin that we need to buy.
Right, right, so it's going to save on
dumpsters.
Dumpster as well as maybe making a little revenue.
Might not even cover the cost of the truck to go back and forth, I don't know.
That may be it all the way.
At least we didn't pay for it, get rid of it, but.
Right. If it breaks even, that's making money.
That's true, yeah.
Or do you want to leave it up?
I think the building needs to be stripped to the, and then brought to the next purpose. I think leaving it up, if they want to try to insulate or paint or abate.
And everything, so.
If, if like a surf pro comes in here, they're going to get all hung up on it.
Use what's there.
Yeah. I don't see anything else clearing in here.
And we're talking, just so people know, we're talking about the back of this building. Anybody have your questions?
Did anyone close the windows yet?
Haven't been back there, I have no idea.
It's not heated back there.
I know birds come in, right?
I have not seen birds. I think there was screens on them, but I can't call.
Rats got all birds.
Rats, birds.
I was going to leave.
It's been neglected all these years, I mean.
But that is the, that's the goal, is to get that.
Yes, I know.
No more get it sealed up here and then figure out the next.
Yeah. Recently, it was open for like dust and stuff to ventilate.
All right. Anything else on the, uh, any more questions on the budget?
No.
On what's in there? None? Okay, let's move on. Uh, anything else, Ellen?
I do not have anything else.
Any board member have anything before we go to public comment?
Nope.
I think I'm good.
All right, at, uh, eight minutes to nine, we're going to open this to public comment. Um, we please ask that your statements be as brief as they can due to the time and the hour, since we still have to go, we are going to non-public after, right? No? Good. Who wants to be first for public comment? Mr. Reed?
Jean Reed, three forty-five Stage Road. I was glad to hear the trustees of the trust funds are actively managing uh, the money that they're able to, such as buying those short-term CDs. Thank you for your answer. That kind of explained that entry in the, the town report kind of left. That is only nineteen hundred dollars left. But that, that's good. On that same tone, is the town treasurer actively managing, or is that money all sitting in a uh, interest-free checking account, for example?
We'll have to get back to you on that question.
Fine, good, thank you. Uh, and, uh, the town funds FDIC, uh, covered, insured.
I presume they would be.
I mean, it's part of the investment policy that we reviewed.
That is part of the investment policy that we have to be with a financial institution that's FDIC insured.
You can get back to me on that because there are limits on that. Each account owner is only insured up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Correct.
So you have several different accounts, John, or me, that all combine to apply for the FDIC insurance. So you can get back to me on that, just open question. Speaking of the highway, were there any encumbered funds from last year's highway budget? I thought you had mentioned there were, Ellen.
Yes, um, a hundred and forty-three thousand towards the road reconstruction and paving, and that's the money that's going to be used towards, um, what he would like to do for, uh, Deerfield Road to finish that project, milling and potentially top coating. And then there was a drainage project that we did on Highland Ave that required some paving, and that didn't get completed last year. So between those two, that's what the encumbered funds, um, contracted with R and D paving for last year, or for.
So everything that was encumbered had an existing contract?
Correct.
That was signed last year?
Correct.
He said they were going to come back out and they were going to try to see if they get, how far they can get, try to work down, I guess.
But all encumbered funds have to be spent on, when the town is legally obligated
By contract.
By the prior, by the prior year, some way legally contracted. You're ensuring me that we, we, the town.
Yeah, so R and D paving took a contract for those pavement projects that were supposed to take place in twenty twenty-three. There were, um, seasonal delays that took place. The paving on Flutter Street and Deerfield didn't take place until early October, so it was just a timing issue that not everything was able to be addressed.
You mentioned training, thank you. You mentioned training for, you're going to have in-house NHMA training?
Correct.
Would you please include the CIP committee?
I think the more the merrier.
Thank you.
No, it's, it's probably going to be dinner skip. Maybe pizza.
Get the grill running.
Good evening. Autumn Bricker and Debbie Ricker from eighty-three Stevens Hill Road. Uh, relating to the town beach agenda item earlier, have a couple, uh, questions and comments for the board. Uh, first, I understand that there is a, uh, easement, uh, for access to, uh, maintain the dam. Uh, is the board aware of that easement, and has the attorney considered if that easement is valid for anything, uh, beyond dam maintenance?
I believe that was.
Probably strictly state, I would think.
I, it's strictly, it's between the property owner and the state of New Hampshire. The town is not included in that. And I know that the, I, I'm pretty sure the town attorney has that. I think I had that forwarded over to her as she was drafting the agreement for the town.
Second question would be if the attorney did determine that that easement is invalid for anything beyond dam maintenance, uh, is the town aware of the legal principle that is withheld in the state of New Hampshire of, uh, prescriptive easements, and more specifically, public prescriptive easements?
I'm very familiar with them, unfortunately. Uh, but again, the prescriptive you just talked about would be continuous use over a continuous period of time, so that might only be Memorial Day through Labor Day.
I would, uh, say that is incorrect, uh, because people use the, the accessway to the town beach all hours of the day, all days of the year. They walk down there, people walk their dogs, they walk in the winter.
They're not supposed to.
But they're.
Illegally, illegally.
Not illegally, because they've been doing it since nineteen sixty-four, and the public prescriptive easement would have ripened in the mid-eighties, establishing that is, there is a public right to, uh, access through that property to the town beach parcel, uh, since around about nineteen eighty-four, when, uh, twenty years had surpassed, because it was overt. It was adverse to the property owner, meaning there was no written permission for them to be doing that, uh, and it has certainly been continuous, um, for years.
That predates signage.
That, I, I don't know when the sign was put there, but it doesn't matter if people were doing it anyways. Uh, clearly, nobody was enforcing. Um, people walking their dog or just exploring the woods, going down to the town beach, even if they weren't driving, the gate shut. Um, so before any landowner permission is obtained, which would invalidate any future claim of a prescriptive, uh, public easement, I would certainly urge the town to consult with a, uh, qualified real estate attorney and determine not just an easement to the town, but if there should be one that is granted to the public at large, given the ongoing access to that property that has been happening, uh, since nineteen sixty-four.
I, I don't have the information at hand I can get back to you, but I believe that option has been presented, and there was a reason behind why we could not use it, but I'll, I'll get the information.
There is case law in the state of New Hampshire, um, fairly recently, uh, where a parcel of property that was publicly owned, where people had been traversing via vehicle and on foot to access recreational activities, uh, that it was established that a prescriptive public easement, uh, came into existence in that case, so I urge the town and their attorney to also review, uh, relevant case law.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy Simphol, 23, Little River Road.
Sorry. In Charlotte, Fife, 85, Deerfield Road.
We are newsletter volunteers. I just wanted to give you kind of an update because I think I told you in the letter that there were some people that may do one online. But we've also had some other people come forward and say they would like to get people to donate so that we could continue. But the problem is we have never gone over our budget as far as we're concerned because we sell ads. But the town doesn't recognize, it goes in the general fund, so we don't get credited with it. So if anyone donated, would that, what would that do? Because it goes in the general fund.
Well, my husband, if they specifically said this money is to be used for the newsletter.
They can donate for a specific purpose and then the board can earmark those.
Because the other thing is our printer is retiring and he gives us an awesome deal. And so I, I don't, we'll look into it, but it doesn't seem very promising because printing is extremely expensive.
But we're going to do our best to try to keep it online because we decided it's better to serve some of the public than none of the public. And then make that attempt to, you know, as long as we know that donations would go, could be earmarked for the newsletter and then try a warrant article for next year. But we've got to get realistic estimates. So that's where we're at. And it's up to me now. And with your permission, may I stay for another matter?
Sure.
Is that all right? Again, Charlotte, Fife, 85, Deerfield Road. I'm here because I very briefly had, barely had a chance to talk with Ellen, but I did volunteer to try to, as a volunteer, to do a feasibility report for a community development block grant. And I think in order to do that, I'm not sure, I just wanted to put that bug in your ear that I would be happy to do that. I'm not saying I will write a grant, but to at least find out what we need, what the grants are. HUD has quite a bit of money and community development block grants are available here in New Hampshire. They're for infrastructure, they're for social services, there are a lot of different things we could use it for and municipal safety. And I could look and see what we qualify for and give you a report. But in order to do that, I can't do that as in, you know, when I've written grants in the past, I've been an employee of whomever I'm, you know, writing a grant for. So I'm not sure exactly whether, you know, how you would want to do that or if you'd like to even accept my volunteering. But I would need your blessing, I think, and some, and access to correct information to find out what we would qualify for. And that sort of information would be, you know, how many children are in school, how many people live here, how many people get social services, how many police calls are made, how many fire calls are made. I mean, nothing that isn't public information, but I would need the correct information and occasional access to Ellen, I guess. So I just thought I'd put that bug in your ear if you'd like to do that. And then I, I just think that the facilities committee helped kick off some changes, even though we're stuck with not having much money. I feel like at least doing a feasibility study to see what money might be out there for grants, there's been so much talk about, we can write grants, we can write grants. And, you know, there have been little grants, especially this wonderful interim librarian that we have now has written grants and done quite a bit for the library, but they're small and we need big. So if that's something you'd like to talk about and get back to me, I may have one or two other people who are willing to work on that, but maybe that could then become a committee that helps write grants, so.
Could she?
I am in full support of this. The community development block grant, I've seen it. It's a great and valuable resource to many communities. I've seen community centers built, I've seen water systems, public water systems replaced under it. It's, there is a plethora of money out there. You just have to apply for it. It's a very voluminous application process. So you need somebody that's familiar with grant writing experience. Obviously Charlotte is and there's a couple of other residents in this community that have grant writing experience and I am all for supporting it's just, it's more administrative clerical work than I'm willing, that I'm able to take on at this time, not that I'm not willing to. So if we have people that are willing to start that process, then.
Could they attend that course?
Yes, yep. So there is a course coming up, an additional grant aid that's available for infrastructures. So I can send you the information.
And most of the grants do require you to, you know, some representative to attend, show good faith and get all the information as well. But, you know, at least doing some of that initial legwork, which obviously we're in sort of a crisis right now, right? We know, won't be like this forever, I promise.
There's no money like free money.
There's no money like free money. And, but we're in a crisis right now. Everybody's really busy. And if we can at least do this initial legwork and see what's really out there and what we qualify for, because ironically, although we need so much, we're a relatively well-off town. And I'm not saying that there aren't people who aren't struggling here, but we're fairly well-off. So we, we have to see what we fit into that isn't going to waste our time so that when we really get into the weeds with this, we can move ahead. So you can think about it and let me know, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Eric Jennings, 42 Siemens Point Road. I just wanted to touch base on, my wife had, had messaged about the dirt roads. They're not getting any better. I know it's a kind of a minefield, right? Over the past years, we've had highs and lows, ins and outs. I've been in contact with the road agent all winter. And I said, hey, this road's not getting any better. Because we know how a pothole is, right? It doesn't get any better. And he said, yep, winter. Can't go out there in the winter. Well, if there's a pothole out here in the main drag, they're going to fix it, no matter what time of the year it is, right? Last year, the cops came to my house and told me not to touch the road because I graded the road and somebody called. There was another issue, not because of what I graded, because they had other issues, you know what I mean? With the police and the EPA and stuff. But I graded the road and they came and they told me not to grade it. So I did really good and I didn't grade it all winter. Well, I've been grading the road. And when I called the road agent last week and I said, hey, I graded my road to a certain point and then a renter on Cove Road rented a machine and graded the main road, he was like, that's great. And I said, no, it's not. That's your job. Maybe, maybe, maybe an explicit, maybe a little bit more. So I was pretty upset. It's very upsetting when you have to drive a quarter of a mile an hour to get down your road. Emergencies, right? All this stuff. And all as I heard all winter was, it's winter, we can't do anything. They came down, they put two piles of rocks on the first two super muddy holes that you couldn't drive a car through and they didn't touch the other two. I'll be back, he says. I understand that we voted a few years back to adopt these town roads and we need to make swales and stuff, but this is private property. So when a guy comes in with a machine and takes three feet of somebody's property away to make a swale or a drainage ditch where there's not a drainage ditch, because I've driven down all these roads the past couple of weekends and checked it out, and then he takes that same dirt and dumps it in a wetland, I'm not trying to tell him how to do his job, but I am telling him how to do his job. And he needs to take care of the holes in the road before you dig up to make swales or drainage ditches where there was never drainage ditches before. We need to address the problem at hand and then work on down the road. My road is so much better now that I've graded it. It takes me probably about three hours, not to mention the wear and tear on my equipment. I have a backhoe, the fuel. My neighbors love it. They all come out, they're like, hey, thanks a lot, thanks a lot. That's great. Siemens Point Road. So I don't know, can I apply for, I don't know, maybe like a reduction on my taxes for taking care of the road or? I, I don't, I'm just joking. I mean, it would be nice if you did, but this is a, I just wanted to address this so you guys would know where I'm coming from and all the neighbors on my road are coming from. So I could just imagine it's got to be across the town. The, you know, the disgust that these holes are this big and this deep. Do you drive a regular car? Anybody here driving a regular car? Drive down my road in the middle of the wintertime? You'll be lucky if you get out without losing your exhaust because there was an exhaust pipe sticking out of one of the holes over the winter. There was, it was on Facebook. You know what I mean? So if we could just address the problem that, that's in front of us now instead of, like I said, he did, he widened the road, but if you drive down there, if it's your property, you'd be disgusted with it. If it's somebody else, it's like, oh, it looks great.
Like you said, he hasn't graded it yet.
He said, I was told, he told me that he was coming out. He's like, I'm coming your way with a bobcat. And then we got a, then we had a, we had hydraulic leak, he got it fixed, hasn't graded it at all. I've graded it. It needs, it needs some.
Needs a grade.
It needs some love, right? It needs a little bit of love, you know what I mean? That's all I wanted to say. I just wanted to put the buzz in your ear and I'll see you guys next meeting because I'm going to block out a little bit of time to come talk to you and bend your ears a little bit more about it. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Eric.
Did you make good notes on that one? Thank you.
Yep. We dismissed the timeline for this meeting.
Skip Severn's, 340 Stage Road. I'm going to talk about some of the things that you saw in the email, so stop me when you want, if you want, but this comment is regards to the board's handling of the fire chief's termination. This is not in any way intended to address any issues that might have precipitated your actions. I have no idea what those issues are or were. Here's what I conclude from the limited information out on the street today. The Board of Selectmen did not process the termination in accordance with your own personnel procedures. Nottingham Personnel Policy provides a section for dispute, grievance, resolution procedure. Step one of this procedure has the employee reporting to the immediate supervisor department head within three days of the issue. Step number two allows for the employee to jump to step three, in this particular case, if the department head is the offender. In this case, the fire chief is the department head of this or these employees. Step three allows for the employee to write, to submit in writing that, bling to the town administrator. Step number four allows for a hearing. I assume this hearing was the one that was before the select board and I assume that was the non-public session on March 20th, 2023. Without any attempt to hear the other side, the fire chief was removed from his position with paid administrative leave on March 23rd, 2023 and escorted home by the police chief. There was no written complaints at this time against the fire chief in violation of the personnel policy. Now, that's a statement I'm making. I was hoping to get something from Ellen, but I'm, I'm doing that. You can tell me I'm wrong. Nottingham, number two. Nottingham Fire and Rescue Department had an election of the officers in accordance with the Nottingham Fire and Rescue Department bylaws on January 3rd, 2023. The results indicate that Chief Vilchak received 10 votes out of the 10 voters that cared to vote. Additionally, he was the only candidate for the position. I indicate cared because the department has about 20-plus members. I realize that the full-time department personnel are not part of the voting members at the time of that election, according to the bylaws. My point for this fact is that seemingly in three months prior to the non-public BOS session that started the termination process and no hint of any adverse situation at the fire department, if a problem truly existed in the department, in the department, one would think that there would have been a challenger, a write-in campaign, or perhaps many non-votes from voters. There was none. So within three months, the fire chief, after 17 years of service to the town, went to crap. No opportunity for discussion or recourse such as training was offered. Number four. Another factor has to be the interim town administrator who worked for the town by way of his employer MRI. March 24th, 2023 was his last day in Nottingham. Surprisingly, he was not present during the non-public session on February 27th, 2023, as evidenced by the non-public minutes unsealed on November 6th, 2023, when the, when Fire Apparently had a discussion with the BOS, according to the minute taker, that was not present.
Is there, I mean, we've been over this, you've written this in a statement before with some of the similar things. Is there something specific you just want to say or is it just you want to point?
Well, this is a comment period.
Well, I know.
Okay. There's no question at the end. I'm just stating what I think the facts are here.
Okay, so presumably you think the facts are, okay?
What I think the facts are. I have nothing to dispute them. So they're my facts. So in regards to those minutes, the non-public minutes that were unsealed and a portion of those minutes talks about a discussion by somebody who wasn't there, to me violates 91 Alpha definitions. Again, I don't know how you recreate those minutes. So in, in. So for 17 years, the election results letters for the fire department have been issued to the TA for documentation of his election as fire department chief. In 2023, apparently that information was not passed on to the BOS for their approval as it has been done previously. These five data points clearly indicates to me that a very emotional decision was made by the Nottingham Board of Selectmen, not one that was made by established procedures or with facts. An emotional decision by a governmental board is never good. That's it. Anybody else?
Doug Bates, 30 Lamprey. I'd like to say something with regard to what Eric Jennings said. The potholes this year were terrible. I'm on the road just south of his. This year I've had to replace a broken suspension coil in a car, two sets of shocks and have an air dam repaired. And I've never had to pay for pothole damages in past years.
You're on Dolof Dam Road.
Well, Lamprey off of Channel, off of Dolof.
The long way.
Out in the car with a broken coil.
All right. I am going to officially call this meeting over. Do you motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Most adjourned, we got a second? Roll call?
Hi, Steve Walsh.
Hi, John Decker.
Hi, John Warren.
Hi, Tim Daebro.
Hi, Matt Schrean.
Good night, Nottingham.